Did you break it, Ryan, or did you just figure it out?
Well, the plug-in adapter is not, it's moving in my phone. It's not tight in there, so it goes on and off all the time.
Oh, okay. Have we got our technology working? With that, ladies and gentlemen, we'll call a meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good morning, everyone, and welcome to our county commission meeting today. At this time, we'd have an opportunity to invitation of any citizen that would like to have a comment or establish a time to meet with the board and make a presentation, which I don't see anybody in our, in our audience this morning. So we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. And are there, yes, Abby?
Mr. Chair, I would just ask that we add time for an executive session at the end of the meeting pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2 sub 3 to discuss pending litigation.
Okay, at the, before, after canvassing the vote, we'll have a executive session for those reasons. Are there any other corrections or additions? For the benefit of the rest of the board, as we get into the department head section, I'm going to leave Mr. Burke to last because his will probably take a little bit longer because I believe some of our engineering firm folks are going to be here and report on the progress of the 34th Avenue project. So with that, we'll approve the agenda without objection, and we'll move on to number five, our consent agenda items. That's our minutes, the travel education, personnel action, cellular allowances, and our human services report. Does staff or anyone have any questions on any of those reports? If not, we'll approve the consent agenda without objection and move on to number six, which is our routine business. Approval of the, excuse me, approval of the claims. Moved by Falcon, second by Miller. Is there any questions, discussions? Any, Commissioner Miller, do you have a question?
Nope.
Any clarifications by any of the commissioners or any of the staff? If not, we'll call a roll in approval of the claims.
Wyseth?
Krogman?
Hi.
Miller? Falcon?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Motion carries.
I'd like to, for the benefit of everybody, and I apologize, Commissioner Krogman, but Commissioner Krogman is traveling today on business, but he is attending the meeting by telephone. So good morning, Ryan.
Good morning.
We'll move on to item number B, our department head reports. I see we have three, four departments here. Joyce, do you have anything to report from equalization?
Good morning.
Morning.
Just a few things to bring you up to speed on equalization office. The building permits are going well. We've had a beautiful fall, which contributes to getting a lot of work done in gorgeous weather. So that's, they're kind of wrapping up, and there's lots of paperwork to do yet. But the outside does not have to be done in the middle of a snowstorm, so that's good. And then in regards to that, we are going to start analyzing all of our sales to determine what our assessment plan will be for 2015 already. And just keep in mind that our year goes from November 1st until October 31st. So we are now at our cutoff period, and all parcels will stand as they were November 1st for 2015. So all plats and splits are now stopped for the year, and Jason's helping us get those done before he leaves. So we're, we're going to get the sales into peer and then analyze them for our assessment plan. I do have a travel request revised. The ag task force that was supposed to be held October 27th has been changed to November 18th, and it's now going to be an overnight travel. They're going to start the meeting early. They must think it's going to be a long one. And in looking at the proposed legislation, I think it's going to be an important one. So I have put in a revised travel for that. But unfortunately, that is the same day as your strategic planning meeting. So I have submitted my thoughts and goals to Stacy. So she has all of my thoughts. And Chris can either come up and sit in on that, or Stacy can present it too. So hopefully, it's okay if I miss the strategic planning for future and go to peer to see what they're going to do with our future. Also, at this time, I would just like to give a big thank you to Jason for being our GIS person for several years. And he has been instrumental in taking Brookings County GIS from this to as big as we want it to grow. And so I would like to thank Jason for all of his time and efforts in getting our GIS where it is. And hopefully, we can get a new person on board that will continue with that growth. And also, thank you to Stacy to keeping the lines of communication open with filling that position so we can have some thoughts from department heads on what we need and, and desire. And the election is over, and it's been great working with some of you, and we'll continue to work with the rest of you and the new candidates that were successful. And we will just continue doing our job as we do it. Any questions? We'll work on that. Right now, they're still working on what constitutes ag, ag criteria. And what they have proposed now is 50 acres or less. It has to be 50 acres. And I'm thinking, we have a lot of ag in Brookings County that doesn't even come close to 50 acres. So we're really going to have to stay on top of that. And I've already expressed my opinions to several people. But any questions?
No, the ag issue is going, you're going to be talking about it 25 years from now.
Yes, and I'm not. Trust me on that, I'm not. I'll still be, I'll still be involved in it.
Okay, thanks, Joyce.
Yes, thank you.
Vicki from finance?
Good morning.
Morning.
Just to kind of give you an update, we are fully staffed in our office. Yay, finally. And we have two of our staff members at the meeting today. Kristen Witchy, which is the deputy finance officer, and Paisley Ram, which is our new employee. And they are both going to be training and taking minutes. We'll have one as a backup and one as the actual minute taker so we can relieve Stacy of doing the whole thing. So we are, we appreciate her being able to do, do the minutes as long as she has until we got fully staffed. So they will be working with Stacy, and hopefully, we can just keep continuing with the same way that we've done it. So, but thank you to them.
They're, they make a nice team.
Yeah, yeah.
Paisley already asked me to help her spell the big words.
Good, good. That, that is good. So we are happy to be fully staffed. And the election that everybody is aware of went really well this year. We had Kevin from the Secretary of State's office here, and he did some running for us and, and helped us. And we also had Megan from, I, I don't remember the new name, Synergy.
Sea, yeah, Sea Change. It's our printing and programming company.
Right.
The company that programs our, the scanner and the auto marks, and they print the ballots. Megan was here from, from their office to help with the new scanner.
Right, and the scanner was a little temperamental when it came to the absentee ballots. If the circles were too light, it didn't take it. And if there was anything outside, you know, it was, it was pretty temperamental. You probably saw on TV with Minnehaha County. Ours was similar to that. We had 2,100 and some absentee ballots. So it did take some, some printing, or you know, it took the ones that weren't reading it into another bin. So we ended up with two resolution boards to kind of speed the process up, and that went very good. And as the night went on, it seemed like it got better. And I know Megan was going to take back to see if there was something they could do. You know, she said that the pencil wasn't reading it correctly. Well, we've always used pencil, so maybe we'll have to look at using pen or, you know, I think that they will have that perfected by the next time. But it goes fast, it went, it went really well. So everybody just really worked hard to make everything work. Thanks, Marty, for being there. It's just nice to have him there. He was there from the start to the finish to help us. And if there was any running or whatever he had to do, he was available to do that. So we thank him for that. And also, in the office, we've gotten all the taxes in. We collected $15 million plus for October. We're all up to date with the taxes. All the mail's been done. We will be sending out delinquent notices next week. But that all went, went very well also. And again, too, thanks for all your hard work, the commissioners, for everything you do. And also, congratulations to the new commissioners. And we will, it's always bittersweet, but we do appreciate everything you've done. And along the same lines as Joyce, Jason, we will really miss him. He, we call him, and he is Johnny on the spot down. We don't have so much in our office with GIS, but with anything technology, with anything, he's just there. So he will really be missed, so thank him. Any questions?
Well, Minnehaha County, they maybe didn't have enough resolution committees to match the number of ballots.
Right, right.
And then will we get a total on total vote centers and analysis of locations at some point in time?
Yes, yeah, we haven't looked at that yet, but definitely.
We're not in a big hurry in a couple of years, but I mean, if we start thinking about.
We have the numbers that voted at each site.
I saw it in the paper, but I didn't want to add up the columns. I was lazy, I figured you'd have it instantly, so.
Yeah, I have a report today that shows exactly how many people voted at which site.
Yeah, and something, something to think about as we proceed in locations. Be interested in your feedback.
Yep, sounds good, thanks.
Thanks, Vicki. Marty? From the Sheriff's Department?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll start out with Jason right away. I don't know if you realize what Jason does for the sheriff's office, but I'm going to miss him also because there's been many instances where we needed to have maps for certain things, when the dairies and people are complaining about roads and things like that. He'd come out and measure for me, and, and we'd come up with pictures. And the incident last week with the college student in the elevator, they, they wanted some pictures of the elevator area, and he was able to, to get those. And, and so he's, he's going to be missed until we find someone else. So just updated on the jail. We have 25 inmates currently in, in jail. I have 63 on PBTs that come in twice, well, 63 total. I have 30 individuals that come on PBTs that come in twice a day. I have 25 on the SCRAM bracelet that come in once a week. So the jail population's a little up than it has been. We ran the last few months about 16 or 17, but it's, it's, it's coming up a little bit. Hobo day went well. I think we had 60, from Thursday to Sunday, I think we had 62 people that came in and was booked in at jail. Of course, they all didn't stay. A lot of them was in and out. I think there was four or five with some drug, some drug-related that needed to stay and go before the judge. Things went fairly smooth. On past hobo days, it seems like they get, they take us all at once. There was 18 DWIs, and it seemed like they'd rest five at a time and bring into us. They kind of overloaded us, but it was kind of, it was steady, but it wasn't, they didn't come all at once. So staff was, he was able to take care of everything, and it ran smooth at, at the jail. Still get complaints on north of town. Trucks are hauling again. We're putting the radar trailer out there where the old Knights of Columbus building is as they come south. And that seems to help a little bit, so we're working on that. And I think at work session, you want to talk about the four-way stop. And we continue to monitor that. I went out and even not monitored in the first, I was only out there five minutes, and someone ran the stop sign going, going south. And so they're forgetting about that. So that's just a concern for me, running that stop sign. You know, I think maybe we might, the city put up an additional sign. And Dick said he ordered a sign to put on the, on the south side that says stop ahead. So we'll, we'll continue to monitor that. And then I have to, as Commissioner Larson has, has said before, I got to beg forgiveness on something because I didn't get a travel request in for next week for the jail minister and myself to attend a couple sessions at the sheriff's conference. It's in Sioux Falls, so I'm not, it's not necessarily, I just want to go down for a couple, talking about jails and stuff, but I don't have my travel request in. So I appreciate it if you'll allow me and my jail administrator to go to the sheriff's conference. One of the things we're going to talk about there is Ebola, and, and that's a concern everywhere. The jail administrator met with hospital staff yesterday. We're working on a policy for, before, when, when someone's arrested, before they come into the jail to ask certain questions. Minnehaha has started this already. And so we're, you know, going to set up some policies, you know, for, for that, a screening process before they come to jail. So that's something we're working on, something that's going to be talked about at the sheriff's conference also. Other than that, that's all I got. If you guys have some questions.
Questions?
Marty, I guess, you know, I, I don't know what we're working on, the decision will be made in the future because it's a city-county decision on that stop signs out there. And, you know, as I look at that, I mean, I went, I drove out there the other day, and I come screech into a halt because I almost missed the sign because I'm not used to that sign being on the north-south on 77. And I guess, when you, when you're out in the middle of nowhere, and all of a sudden, there's a four-way stop, it really, I mean, I would hate to see us have accidents because we put a sign up and somebody missed the sign as a much danger the other way. So I don't know whether or not, who puts the resolution through or whether it's, it's a joint resolution ordinance that the city has to put one down because they're their own part of it and we have to do it, or whatever's done. But I guess I'd like to have a lot more conversation on that. I'm just not looking at that now and it's open, so convinced that a four-way stop out in the middle of the country, if it's not expected by the traveling public. I mean, you travel 77 all the way from wherever, and you don't run into a stop sign, and all of a sudden, it's there.
Whoops, have you ever traveled out to Comer Corner? That one got stuck out in the middle of the country.
That's true.
That was a hard one to stop.
But that was accidents caused by, there was a lot of bad accidents out at that station. That's true. I think at one time, the bypass, before there was electric lights out there, went through four-way to not four-way, and there were accidents when you make that transition. But it can happen either way. Where are you going to be when you get all done? Is it going to save lives the long run? I think no matter what you do, you're going to have people not aware. I guess I would really like your opinion, I mean, from law enforcement, looking at the accidents. I mean, I, I guess I can live with it either way, but, but I do think, especially when you're coming out of town, I mean.
No, I know, I, I have mixed emotions, but I've only heard positive of wanting to keep the signs there. The, the person that lives on the corner there, he witnesses a lot of stuff. So he sees, you know, the, the ones that are running, running them and things like that. But there's other things we could do if we decide to keep the stop signs there. You know, we can, I think in Sioux Falls, between Brandon and, and Sioux Falls, they got red lights all around that stop sign that's out in the middle of nowhere. And, and there's things we can do if we continue to do that. The city police is helping also monitor that, and they've been out there and helping too. So we're just doing the best we can. I have some mixed emotions too about that particular stop sign. And we just need to, you know, keep plugging away and see what we can do with it and keep monitoring and, and so forth. I think at the work session, we're going to visit a little bit about it also.
Well, I think, I mean, when I was on traffic safety with the city, I mean, signs were put up for a reason, not just put up because somebody thought it was a good idea, based upon accidents, based upon traffic, based upon a lot of different things. And I, if it meets that criteria, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem, you know, moving forward with it. But I, I want to make sure it meets that criteria, not, it's not going to cause more problems than it's going to gain.
Well, there are, there are site issues out there. That's, that's the problem. That's the criteria that it's going to meet. Because it doesn't meet the accidents, it doesn't meet the, the vehicle number. But there are site issues.
But if you have site issues, but you're not having accidents, then is there a problem?
Well, we do have accidents out there, but probably not enough that, I don't know how many it takes.
No, it's something we need to talk about. Jackie from the city needs to probably come in because she's been dealing with, I, I, the study. I don't know what actually the city has done out there, but they said they were going to do a study. And, and so Jackie probably needs to come sometime and visit about that.
I would just hate to have somebody coming, you know, coming from the west, stop at that stop sign and say, okay, I got a four-way stop here, I'll pull out because this guy going north or south is going to stop, and they don't. I mean, that's.
I have the same concerns. We'll keep working.
It's a good question, but we're kind of getting into our work session versus Marty's report. You know? But I understand your reason for your question too, Commissioner.
Anyway, that's all I have, if you have anything else.
Okay, okay. Any other questions for Marty? Thanks.
Oh, sure. I'll quit. Is if, if the high school team gets to the dome, I would, well, never mind. Talk to you later.
Okay.
What, did you have a secret play you wanted to run? Didn't want to expose it, or what?
Okay, I think our next department head would be Highway and Dick. I'll ask you, and we've got some folks from Banner and Associates. And guys, feel free to come on up to the table and the microphone with Dick, and we can, you can probably cover that portion of your report first and, and then.
You guys have been working together. You met yesterday with Susan Tracy and got all kinds of stuff going on, so let's.
Well, we can start with, with 34th. We got nine.
Scott Moore with Banner Associates, sorry.
Okay, we got 90% review plans out to all the utilities. Sioux Valley Electric's got them, VMU's got them, the city of Brookings has them, MediaCom has them, ITC has them, Swiftel has them. And I've had some conversations with Sioux Valley Electric already. They're not, there's a couple of poles they got concerns with, but for the most part, they're not seeing anything that creates havoc for them. So we're, we got a meeting tentatively set up for November 20th. So all the utilities and the cities, everybody who's got plans can talk about what they have for review comments so we can get final plans established. So, and that's November 20th at 1 o'clock at our office. And I've had a few responses that says they got no problems, they can meet that time. So we're looking forward to getting all the review comments in for that. Yesterday, we met onsite with Susan Tracy with the Department of Transportation for that grant that we applied for, for the crossing arms. And the railroad was there, Susan was there, Dick was there, and myself was there. The railroad sees no issues. It's a pretty simple for the, for the safety arms to come down. The rubber guys, this is just, this will be a piece of cake, simple project for them to do. It sounds like that's a go. What we did find out is that grant is strictly for the safety, safety arms and lights. The actual improvement to the crossing and the tracks, that's a whole other process that we're going to have to work on and, and get that process going. Wasn't aware of that, was, I was assuming that grant was taking care of the crossing and the safety arms. It's just the safety arms. So we'll have to work on getting the crossing work moving ahead so that, that doesn't hold us up. And it shouldn't hold us up because we can still make our January bid time. We can still have all the process in work. So we, we shouldn't have an issue there. It's working with the railroad, they're new. We haven't worked with this railroad before, so we're, we're trying to figure everything out. As far as the permit to work in their right-of-way, we do need to address that and get that approved. That's a $3,000 application fee. And the best we've been able to figure out is we got to do it. And I asked them yesterday because the gentleman in Florida that we were dealing with, with the application wants a different, he wants a right-of-way for the crossing. He wants an agreement on the crossing. And Susan Tracy with the DOT says, no, we don't have to do that. So if he says you do, you tell him to contact me. We just have to do the right-of-entry to be able to work within their right-of-way, which is the permit we were discussing. And we can move forward with that. And then that just allows us to do the roadwork that we want to do, and it allows us to build the pad that they need for the crossing arms in the little building out there. So that's where we're sitting with the project. We're still on track to meet our January bid opening. I don't see any issues with that, so.
You saw Scott go like this, and he's pointing to.
Pardon?
You saw Scott go like this with his hand, he's pointing to Ms. Howard. And, and the amount of work she's done on this, she's been kept real busy, going through different statutes and legal matters on this. Where are we at with right-of-way purchase and Dick and Scott as far as coming up with praise value or whatever? And then also, where do you think we're at with your advice on the easement process for utilities?
I guess I had some further discussions with a couple of the landowners this week now that they had had a chance to look at the plans and stuff and had a little better idea of what we were looking at specifically. And it doesn't, they're still willing to work and negotiate. There's been a couple smaller requests, but I think it'd be better to discuss them at the work session as far as, after visiting with Scott, he certainly didn't see any problems with what I would call a minor modification, you know, as we do the final plans. And the other thing with the right-of-way, I guess, I visited with Ryan a little bit last week, and he has a pretty good idea of what we should offer. But as far as sitting down and going through the nuts and bolts and the actual process of it, we'll probably have to reach a little more finite parameters, so.
Yeah, I guess that's appropriate that we talk about work session. And we should probably just stick to whatever we can get out of these two gentlemen for the day. And then, Abby, if we get into the offers and things, is that executive session material? When you start talking about negotiations, right? Hate to put you on the spot, I guess, but.
It potentially could be. It depends on how much detail you want to get into and what specifically we're covering.
Yeah, okay. So I guess, yeah, if you two have any comments on the right-of-way process or easement, otherwise we'll wait for the work session, I guess. Questions? Brad, do you have a comment?
I got no comments, nope.
Any other questions for the?
I guess a question I have, if, if you can't come to the right-of-ways and the agreements with the railroad on the tracks and their rebuilding and all that stuff, that in, in a timely manner, that doesn't stop the project from being bid. I mean, that's just one small section of it because that work is going to be done by the railroad anyway. It's their track, their track. They will do that and bill us anyway, so it's not like you're going to have a separate contractor or a separate bidder on the project, correct? Am I correct on that?
On that line, Dennis, the gentleman yesterday and Susan both agreed with Scott and I that this gentleman he's been conversing with down in Florida probably doesn't have a clear idea of what we're asking. And so once we get a little better description to him, then it just moves to, like Scott said, they just want to make sure people have permission to work within their, their railroad right-of-way. It was a good meeting, it actually.
It was a good meeting. It actually cleared up a lot of things.
If I'm observing correctly, we're down to the, kind of the, the final details of the entire project, getting ready for the bid. And actually, the dollar amounts we're talking about is a very, very, very small percentage of this total project. It's just a matter of kind of ironing out these final details. Is that a correct assessment? I think, I think the, the desire of this board is to keep pushing as hard as you can to get this all accomplished. Because we want to get the project bid so that it's built next year.
Yeah, we're still looking down for a, a bid opening date around January fifteenth, you know, that, that week somewhere in there. So that's, that's still our goal, and I know that's your guys' goal, and then we let us know that. So, yeah, we're, we're, that shouldn't be a problem right now. We're okay.
Is there anything that we are just concurrents or whatever on the three thousand dollar fee, fee that we have to pay for this application? Or is that just understood that, I mean, does it have to be listed that we concur that, that we, that fee is going to be paid?
That's on the agenda for action today.
Okay, I, I must have missed that.
But I think, I think I agree with Commissioner Falcon is we come to these things and we've got Commissioners Krogman and Wyseff that work very closely with these people, and they work very hard and diligently on the project. That, you know, the consensus I feel, feel from this board is whatever it takes to get it done, let's just get, get the thing accomplished. Let's get the right-of-way purchased. Let's, you know, and is that kind of the general feeling?
Just keep it on track, fellas. That's all I ask. Just keep it on track. You knew what my deadline was, and that's where I expect it to be.
I told you long ago, that's the way we get that in our answer.
Well, it's got to be done. Yes, Commissioner Wyseff.
One question for you guys. My hearing, did you say three thousand in our action item E? We have down four thousand.
That first application that I kind of sent out as an email attachment, that was the one the gentleman in Florida wants us to do. And that's the one Susan Tracy says, don't do that one. So I, and yesterday when the emails that went out, I sent the correct one that goes with it. So if I need to send that again, I'll get that filled out. So once it's already to go with the drawings that go with it, I'll just send it up here and get the appropriate signature, and we'll get it mailed off.
Well, we need to make a motion for the right amount of money.
It's three thousand dollars.
That was my confusion. I saw the four thousand on here, then you talked about three thousand. I didn't know if that was something separate besides, but it's actually three.
It's three thousand.
Okay. So when we come to that item, why we can, okay? Anything else on the project? Commissioners, any further comments from you fellows? Well, I want to thank you for being here. This is what we need, is that continual communication between everyone involved in the project so that we're up to speed and can keep pushing forward so we meet all of those deadlines. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Dick, you got some other things you'd like to give us this morning?
I'll have quite a bit more in the work session, but I also met with Banner this week. They finished our two thousand fourteen bridge inspection report, compiling some of the data and looking at some of the suggested maintenance that we do, which is just a normal procedure we follow. Just highlighting some of the things, currently we have thirty-two bridges that have a sufficiency rating less than fifty, which gives them the ability to be put on a replacement list through the state. After the two thousand fourteen report, we'll have three more structures that we can list. And so I'll be getting those ready, plus some resolutions that you'll approve to, to make sure we get them listed. Even though the state is still in their limbo type process of processing these things, it's still good to get them in there. Also, there were only three that the sufficiency ratings dropped below fifty so that we'll be eligible to include them. So that, once I get that done, that'll bring us to a total of thirty-five structures that we have listed for replacement. And also, as, as part of this, I've been compiling and, and looking at the results of the study of structures less than twenty feet. And I've come up with a list of seven structures that are in what I would consider fair to poor condition. And they're box culverts, like the ones we've been replacing the last couple of years. And I would just, again, I don't want to bore you with all of that stuff, but it is coming that, that I'll have that all compiled, and you'll be able to see which ones I'm talking about and kind of prioritize so that you can see the needs that we have. So that pretty much does it, and we're finished. We'll finish today, actually. The last two culverts will get on, get put in on twenty-five from fourteen up to white. And that will be our project next spring that we'll be bidding out, that will be done for an overlay project, which follows suit of what I've been trying to get established in the last couple of years is that you do your remediation before the road project takes place. We'll do the crack filling. We'll have everything set to go. And then when it gets overlaid, it should have a, a pretty good chance of surviving in the future. And so that's why it's taking place, and, and I would really like to get them paved, and they would have been paved. However, Bose is working with that special mix again out there at the airport, and it's extremely difficult for us to work with. And it wouldn't be bad if you were going to patch them and then come back and be able to overlay them immediately because it, it would kind of cover up the roughness. But this time of the year, we don't dare do that. We're going to wait, and next week, hopefully, they'll switch back to their regular mix, something that's doable for us, and, and we'll get them the best we can as soon as we can. So if people ask you, that's, that's the plan. We're hoping to, to accomplish all that, so. Other than that, I don't have anything other than the work session stuff coming up, so unless you have any questions or-
My quick question, Dick, the, the seven, you said we're down to get seven old box culverts or those situations that need to be addressed. Is that over and above the aggressive move that we made during our budget process to pick up several more? Or are they a part of what we're trying to accomplish this year?
This will be a part of. This was the initial, if I understood correctly, that the board was interested in getting a plan of attack of what we could kind of expect if we were looking at the deficient or, or poor quality ones. Yes, so if everything goes right, we'll just take two more off of this and two more, keep going the best we can.
Good. Good. Thank you.
I got a quick question for Dick.
Yes.
Yeah, the, when you talk thirty-five structures, you know, you talked about the seven box culverts, and they're under twenty feet. But of those thirty-five, what are you looking at, kind of a cost on a per basis there? If, if we were looking at trying to, again, be aggressive and put some funds towards, you know, we can't wait for the state to, to do these, even though we can get three more on there, you know, they're twenty years out. But if we were to put a plan of attack to try to be a little more aggressive on there, what are we looking at a cost on average? And I'm not going to hold you to it or anything like that. But if we were going to do some long-term planning to take care of some of these thirty-five structures that are getting close, what cost per structure are we looking at?
I, anytime you're over twenty feet, you would be looking at a minimum of probably three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand. And like the bridge going in north of Bruce in two thousand sixteen will be right around a million five to a million seven. So I would use that as my parameters. And then what I'm hoping to do as we, we'll be constructing a bridge, as you know, either later this winter, early next spring out by the gun range. And, and then we'll have a firm engineering estimate of the bridge up by Bruce. And generally, what I think would be a good kind of a basis for answering a question like yours is I'll take a, a linear footage of those costs, and then I'll just kind of put them together so that you can see, like, this one will be a hundred and twenty-three feet long, so it should be in this ballpark. Is that accurate enough for you, Ryan, or?
Yeah, that, that'd be great. Again, you know, it's not like we're flush with cash or anything like that. But I certainly think in investment in roads and bridges and the writings on the wall and all of, having sat through Senator Ollie's highway needs assessment there the other day, you know, I think we need to take a look at that and see if there's a way to invest in our, our bridges and try to get caught up. Because we're never going to get it done, you know, the way the state going through that way. There's just not enough time and not enough funds, and we have a lot of bridges. And so I'd like to see us maybe take a look at your information that you have. If there's a way, you know, we can certainly continue maybe doing those box culverts because they're not near as expensive. But I'd like to see us certainly start working on some of the structures too. And take your advice, Dick, on the most needed ones or the ones that would. If you're looking at planning on an overlay in the next two years or something on a project, and there's a bridge there, would it be smart for us to invest in that bridge and get that ready to go before the overlay project comes on? Not just like you're talking about preparing the, doing the maintenance work before you do that overlay so you got a good road for a longer period of time? You know, I'd like to take a look at that.
Okay.
You know, Ryan, I, I, that's why I agree so much with you in regards to your comments on, on some of these bridges. And we've got a case up in my community where we had one of the long iron bridges. And that was taken out and a big box put in, and I'm sure that box was much cheaper than, than trying to put another bridge across there. And Ryan, that box works perfect. It moves the water sufficiently, you know. So I mean, there's ways that we're going to have to be creative in local governments in doing things other than what's the old quote-unquote "bridge." We're going to have to go to different conveyances to, to accommodate our commerce in the communities in a more efficient way.
I agree.
Okay, thank you. Dick, anything else for Dick? Thanks, Dick.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Bob Hill's at a meeting today.
Yes.
And I thought Megan might be here. Planning and zoning's been very busy. And you've probably, oh, did you open the one that Michelle tried to send, all the documents? That's twelve hundred trees that Bob tried to cut and all the correspondence that has taken place over the dairy? Did you guys get the electronic? Yeah, he was going to print it out, and you guys needed to have that.
I think she said eighty-three pages, you know, and I, my one computer was, was-
They're at the end of the agenda.
It's in, but the other part is in the agenda.
And then I think she sent them as a separate email as well, instead of printing out five hundred pages. She just did it that way.
Ms. Howard has been very, very busy and doing a wonderful job. We've had, besides that, an alleged spill that came from an umbilical cord opening. And hopefully, the spill was very minor, but it kind of came at a bad time. We were given photos. And also, for everything that you ever do in this job, you learn something. And called DNR, and Bob was gone, this, you know, all the stuff going on. And is that if you ever have anybody about a complaint, a private citizen, and it doesn't have to be a citizen of the state, can put in a complaint to DNR. If a public official does it, like Commissioner Bob, oh, that's anonymous. DNR keeps that anonymous. So I guess for private citizens, they ever want to complain, they can, it'll be investigated. And it was investigated quite quickly. I got the photos, passed them on. They sent somebody down from Watertown like right now, and our office was up there. Commissioner Larson went up there. But if a, one of us, if I did it, or one of you, or Bob, then the complaint is public knowledge. And our office, as Bob said, all conditional use permits, whether they're KFOs or whatever they are, he doesn't, has zero tolerance for any violations. So took care of it immediately, and I think the, fortunately, it wasn't a big deal. And DNR's handling the legal side of it to whatever degree. So anyway, I appreciate our staff, Planning and Zoning Office, Abby, for being involved with it right away. And, and quite frankly, the state immediate reaction to that. So we've been busy with that, and the stack of emails about the dairy, and the appeal processes started. And Planning and Zoning Board members were served, and we'll go over that later. So been a busy office.
Yeah, Planning and Zoning has, has been real busy. And I think what you referred to was handled quite professionally from, from the owner to the regulators, so. Okay, no other department heads are with us. Let's move on to Finance Office, and is that going to be you, Vic? Welcome again. We could save you some walking if we'd let you do your department head report and finance report same time, wouldn't we?
That's fine. You should have received in your packet the change that will be in the levy for the county. When we were certified from the Department of Revenue, the utilities, they certified us the whole amount for basin electric instead of the discretionary formula. So this is the change, and it's still down from last year, but it went, the total levy went from four point three eight five to four point five oh seven. And the dollars raised and everything else is the same. No budget changes, just the levy changes. And that is something we have to note in the minutes. We don't have to republish anything of the adopted budget, but just so it's noted that the levy will be changing.
Okay, and so we have that information for our note takers? Anything else? Any questions?
It's listed as action on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, but it doesn't need to be, does it? Does it have to be an official action or be it noted?
It probably wouldn't hurt to have an action. They said to be it noted, but this way we're completely covered.
Okay, so if at this time the chair would ask for a motion to acknowledge or accept the changes in the levy based on, help me with the right word.
On those proposed changes.
Okay, approve the, approve, well, we're approving the changes as proposed.
Yes.
Okay, that, does that sound better? Okay. Chair would entertain such a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Second by Commissioner Falcon. Further discussion? I'll, I'll ask one clarification. Abby, is that verbiage okay? I mean, we're all, we all know what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I think you're fine.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Miller.
And for clarification, this, the levy still is lower than it was.
Yes. It was four point eight oh six before.
Okay, thank you.
To make you feel good? Okay. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Please call a roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon? Wyseff?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Anything else for the Finance Office? Guess not. Okay, thanks, Vicky. Our scheduled agenda items, regular business, item number A, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for GIS technician. Chair would entertain a motion by Falcon, second by Miller. Oh, okay. I seen Danny hitting his button, so. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Who is the motion?
I made the motion.
Miller, Falcon. Okay, Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyseff?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I would just like to say that I am deeply saddened that we are losing Jason. And he has been an excellent employee. He has stepped up when we have needed him to, when we have lost people in that office. And I wish him the best of luck, but I, I am really sad that he is leaving.
I agree. And I was thinking, I didn't know appropriate time, but he stepped in a couple of times with our computer tech situations.
Yes.
Been an excellent employee.
He is.
Vice Chair Wyseff and I can certainly attest to that, having, going through the employee transitions and everything and what Jason did for us. He's an excellent individual and hate to see him leave, but then I'm always happy for somebody that could, advancing their career. At this time, item number B is discussion and- At this time, item number B is discussion and possible action to approve funding request for the Sherwood and Elizabethburg Brookings Rotary Boulevard project. And I see Mr. Wicks and you guys will come and introduce yourselves.
Hello, Zeno Wicks.
Matt Coonorth.
Matt what?
Coonorth.
Coonorth, please sit.
Just here to discuss a project that we started last year. One of our members of Delta Chi fraternity came up with the idea of putting trees into the boulevards. There was a pretty big hoopla about cutting down some trees on the boulevards on Sixth Street. And so we came up with a bit of a proactive idea of working with the university and raising money to plant trees into the boulevard. And the university has a project where they're called a tree university and they have to cooperate with the community in order to maintain that integrity as a tree university. And so what we did with them is they bought all the trees for us wholesale. And then the fraternity raised $1,500 and we had that matched by the Rotary. And so it's a Rotary project that they're very excited about getting something done in the community. And the hardest part for us is we actually put together six different species of trees so that we're not in this place of cut down the chestnuts, then cut down the elms, then cut down the ashes. We're putting down, put out six different varieties, 10 of each. Last year, we went out and actually planted them all. We put together just $25 if you wanted to have one put in your boulevard. That was just to get a little skin in the game so they'd water them for us. But other than that, we did all the work and very successful project. Actually, 59 of the 60 lived, so we only have to replace one and worked out super. But the sort of hard part for us is the $1,500 is just an organization that, you know, it's a bunch of young guys who are in college. And so what we're looking at doing is asking you as a commission, as well as the city council, to put up $500 a piece. We'll raise $500 and the Rotary Club still is interested very intently on matching that amount of money. And so we're just trying to reduce the amount of money we have to raise. We'll still do all the work and that kind of stuff. And so we're asking you for $500 to maintain that project or program throughout the year. In addition, we sort of tacked on there 250 and I'm gonna let Matt talk about that. He is the one who's gonna be taking over the project next year and so he's sort of learning how to do it this year. But we came up with a little bit of an idea to think about the county as a whole.
Yep, and just a little background, I'm a freshman here at SDSU Ag Business major, originally from Fullda, Minnesota. So my role in the project right now is I'm just the general assistant, just getting into it and learning from Zeno and the other Delta Chi member who is taking the lead on this. And the goal is to originally take the lead on the outer communities, so that'll be my role in this. Any questions?
Well, I, I am really thrilled that you are looking at Brookings County as a whole. Because what we hear so often is that nobody cares about what goes on. It's all, all focused around the city of Brookings, which is a part of Brookings County, but we do have more. So I am thrilled that you're looking at more, at working out in the county. And so having said that, I would move to give 750 to them.
Okay, is there a second?
And I would comment before you vote that the proposal on the 250 is, I think we might start with Volga just because they're sort of our biggest community in the outer regions, to go to their city council and say, the county has contributed $250. If you match it, we'll come and put 10 trees in your boulevard. So get them to have a little skin in the game as well.
Has the city?
The city has already agreed to give their 500 for the, in the, in the city portion.
So the motion probably should be that we would match the five and if the city of Volga agrees to their match, we would match the 250.
And we can go on if Volga, Volga doesn't wanna do it, we'll go on to, you know,
Continue on, I would encourage you.
Well, I mean, we'll find somebody.
Go to White, go to
I would encourage you to look out at all of the
We'll do it all.
Okay.
So are we voting on 500 or 750?
We can do a friendly amendment along the lines that Zeno, that we do 500 and, and the extra 250 should, they, I think you're gonna find somebody that'll do it. I think let's just do the 750.
I think it, I'll be honest with you, I think it's clearer if we just give them the 750.
The 500 is for
Go ahead, Ryan.
Do you have the, the maintenance of the trees going on? You know, we're putting them in the boulevards, which is basically city property and it's usually their, their responsibility to maintain those as they grow up and that kind of stuff. Is that, is that, are they all behind that, that they're willing to take care of them moving forward?
Uh, yeah, the city is very clearly behind us. I mean, it's just a, you know, I mean, when it comes to priorities, yeah, the boulevards are their job, but at the same time, they've got plenty of things to spend their money on. And, and they're very excited about this opportunity. So they're, they actually have gone out and marked all the different electrical wires and plumbing and everything like that. They're very enthusiastic along those lines. And so, yeah, they're, they're very much on board. Park and Rec is pretty excited about the program. So yes, they're prepared to maintain the trees.
Yeah, because the, you know, the city has a pretty aggressive tree planting for the boulevard and that kind of stuff. And I'm like Stephanie here, we need to be able to get this out into the county to maybe, you know, the surrounding communities that don't have that type of an aggressive tree planting in their boulevards, that this might be a good opportunity there. But I would also encourage, you know, that, that discussion with their city on maintaining, you know, for example, Fitzvolga this year, that, you know, the city there is behind that project and says, yeah, we'll maintain them. We'll, we'll, if we need to water them, if we need to prune them, all that kind of stuff, we'll, we'll do that.
For the, for the benefit of the rest of the board at Rotary, we had a presentation put on by these young fellows and they had the pictures and everything of the project. Looked like a very successful project and it, it's kind of a partnership that we talk about a lot, city, county, university, in this case, it's Delta Chi. And I think they got a good project and I'm really thrilled, like everybody else, to see you looking beyond just the confines of the city of Brookings. There's a lot of other projects you can do. Yes, Commissioner?
Zeno, breakfast today, a question came up and I couldn't answer it. When we were on the park board, the city took down the trees, they were elm, on the boulevard at their expense. And they replanted at their expense. What's the history here? Did something happen after we got off the board that?
Well, I mean, they just, we have a lot of boulevards and they, they don't have a lot of money.
So they quit doing that? My neighbors quit.
They do, they, they try to put trees in, especially the newer areas, but especially in the older areas, you know, that, that they're, there are just not enough trees. I mean, they just don't have the, you know, the, the people. And so it was a very popular project. I mean, those 60 trees went like that. I mean, people were like 25 bucks, you bet. And so, I mean, the city is very excited and they continue to put boulevards in, but as the city expands so fast, you know, they're trying to get their trees out into the newer areas where there is no trees and that kind of stuff. So almost all the trees that we planted, we planted in older sections of town.
In the letter we got from Stacy after your, your visit, and I'm not a Rotarian, but this is named after Dr. Berg and Betty
Uh, yeah, and actually it's Sherwood and Elizabeth. I'm sure Sherwood is, he was a really good friend of ours. He was a big Rotarian as well.
Well, I got my attention. I mean, two very fine people, but
Sherwood just loved trees. There's no doubt about that.
Well, I'm with, you know, Mr. Miller that, you know, we gotta look countywide and it's a great project. I guess I would like a little more emphasis outside, yeah. And not that every community shouldn't take care of their, themselves, but, you know, I love trees.
Well, at the same time, the, the great part about it for the fraternity is, is he gets to sit here, talk to you and has to go and talk to Park and Rec and has to go and talk to the university. So the experience for his resume and everything else is, say, I worked on a project like this. And so it's, for us, it's a really good thing as well. When all of a sudden you have to communicate with a whole bunch of different people as well as go knock on doors and see if people want the trees. It's for us a very great project as well to become engaged with the community.
Well, you may be in this for a while in light of the fact that you're a freshman. So I'm hoping that we can encourage you to continue looking at our, our towns outside of Brookings as well.
I, I just would go along with that. Maybe a step further is that, you know, I want them to learn the political process and it's not always easy. And is that maybe a letter to the councils of Elkton or whatever and saying that this may be an ongoing project?
Oh, yeah, and that's, you know,
And that
And I think you would know, as far as Rotary goes, I mean, they, they approved on, you know, but obviously their board changes from year to year. But they, at the moment at least, Mary Kidwater and that group are very enthusiastic about the idea.
In fact, in, in fact, I gave a memorial to your tree project in memory of Woody Berg.
Yep.
You know, Mayor Birkey, I'm sure we'll jump on this in a second, but maybe instead just making Volga the chosen one and they're wonderful people over there, but maybe make the opportunity available to other, and just see what, if we could find out, gauge the interest in other communities. I know Mayor Birkey, she will not let this slide by for two seconds, but, but rather than just choosing them over
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, like I say, it's, it's more just a matter of along those lines. If another community wants us to come plant trees, they can come cry you a river and say, they'll give 250 if you give 250 and we'll still figure out the trees.
So I guess if you could reach out to the other ones, that'd be a great service for us and I appreciate it. Okay. And this would come out of our promotional funds, as you indicated, we've got money in there for that. So we could use the promotional funds for that and, and maybe just kind of make a note and anticipating it could be extended into other years. You know, I think that's important, so.
Okay, and is, would that be a part of the motion, that it come from our promotional fund? Probably should. We should designate where, what
Yes, that's fine.
Where it's coming from. Is that all right, guys? Okay, with no further ado, we'll call a roll.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wysef?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good luck, folks. Great project.
Well done, Dennis.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, Matt. You know Larry Aninson? Yeah, so do I. From a different era.
Okay, action, item number C is action to approve agreement 1478, the no limits, all in one solution through Unitrends for data backup. For discussion purposes, the chair would entertain a motion.
Tomo, second.
Second.
Krogman, it takes a little time for it to fly through the air, so I'll recognize your second.
Thank you.
Okay. Discussion.
This is the, the backup information that Sean has gone through and looked at. And he and I have sat and discussed, down and discussed it. And this is what we came up with. This is a three-year agreement with this company for backups. I think Sean's maybe in the room next door if we wanna bring him out and get any other information. But this provides backup with this company. Our information is encrypted, so they're not able to look at it, but it's backed up with them. And then it also provides for a backup off-site here locally where we, if we wanna keep it at the Highway Department. You know, something of that nature where we have a backup that's here local, but off, not in this building as well in case of a catastrophic, catastrophic event here.
Okay, this is what we've been needing.
Yes.
This, maybe Sean may have to come out.
You want him to come out?
Or maybe Stacy can answer this since she had the discussion. During our little reign there of absent computer technology and two of us, which were absolutely worthless.
Yeah, there wasn't, there wasn't a technology brain between the two of us, was there?
We couldn't even back up our whole system. We could only back up part of our system at times. Does this solve this or is this just one more step?
And, and actually Sean has even come up with a solution now that we're doing daily backups on the information that changes throughout the day. And then at the end of the week, we get, get a full backup now too. So we have a solution, you know, we're working on it. Even now, we're in better shape than when we were before Sean came on board. But this is what, this is what we've been looking at getting all along.
And then, and then this is just, is this the beginning of like, then we have server problems too? Server inadequacy or whatever? Or is this, this gonna be it for a little bit? Or, or is this just the tip of the technology iceberg? While the servers were in question, that was also brought up. We had a list of things we needed and it came to quite a tab. And this is, whatever it was, 23 or whatever, nice deal. But is this it for a while or to solve our problem?
This has nothing to do with servers.
Right, but is this the, just the beginning? That's all I'm asking. Are this 23 and then we got another 75 coming? That's fine. Whatever it takes to do the job, but I just
I, I mean, Sean could probably come out and speak to it too, but
Sean, if you can hear me, would you come out here, please?
I don't know that, in my discussions with Sean, that I don't know that there's a server that's in immediate need of replacement. But he's the guy that will have your answers for it.
My question for you, Stacy, is this amount for the three-year period, this isn't every year?
No, this is the amount for the three-year period, yes.
The current plan that we're looking at, the backup solution, is something where, yeah, it, it is designed to fill our entire backup needs. GIS does take a substantial amount of data. They tend to back it up themselves. We have a separate server for them. With the new backup system, we will have some more recent servers available by replacing our old, well, being able to repurpose our old backup solution. I've discussed that with Jason and I'll discuss it with the new GIS person when they, whenever they get hired to figure out if they would like to basically take our old backup server, which has a great deal of storage, and use that for GIS, which typically requires a great deal of storage. As far as other things that are going to need to be replaced, there's nothing that is a pressing need right now. The biggest need that I've heard and realized from everyone is the backup solution and having a reliable one in place. With our agreement with Marco and Unitrends, we have essentially one unit here, one unit at their site. They initially send us both of them, so then we can do a local backup of everything on both of them. Then we send the second one back to them and as stuff gets updated, we push that to the remote one as well. It's all 256-bit encryption. It's something along the lines of several hundred lifetimes to decrypt it if someone were to try to. That's on our end and on their end. And then it also includes an archiving package where we'd be able to essentially plug in additional hard drives and take those to someplace that isn't here. In the event of fire, disaster, whatever, we want it to be far away essentially. So that we, if we do have a catastrophic failure or catastrophic event, we're able to recover quickly. In the event of the hardware failure of the backup unit itself, Unitrends would send us the version that they have sitting with the most recent backup. And we'd have it within one day.
Sean, this is all really good news, 'cause Donna and I got scared to death one day in a meeting. We found out we weren't backing up completely. And so this is very reasonable and I appreciate the time you put in on it. And I like the word that maybe we can get by with some servers. I realize we're gonna have to replace technology as we go, but now that, so do you want us to prove the 17 plus the three grand there, the two?
Yes, that would be for the unit itself, the three-year service plan. In the event we do like the service that we are given through Unitrends, if we, in three years when we revisit this, if we decide to agree to extend the service plan, they'll ship us a new unit with the most upgraded hardware for the same model we have. And all we have to pay is the service fee, not the new unit price. So that, but that's something to be visited in a few years. So, that, but that's something to be visited in a few years. The disk archiving package is what we need to back it up to something external and get it offsite. It, and it's more of a, keep it somewhere, have a year worth of backup somewhere, if that's how long we want to determine, well, how long we want to hang on to stuff. Depending on what you as commissioners want, and what, I believe, speaking with Abby, there hasn't been a, there isn't a county data retention policy in place beyond what's required by the departments, and typically that's hard copies. So, as far as the digital, the digital retention, we need to figure out what I need to basically monitor and take care of.
That sounds like something the staff and you are going to work up, because I'm not going to help you with it. But I'll sure back you up all the way.
Well, it's, I, there's been nothing federally or statewide that's been said, this is what needs to be done in my research. It's going to be more of what are we comfortable with? And having hard copies of a lot of things are, is still very commonplace. A lot of register of deeds, equalization, a lot of that have extensive physical files. And if that's all that's required, then we can maybe hold off on the digital, but it's not something that we want to dismiss by any means. And I'm hoping to at least maintain one year worth of backups, so that if a year from now, we'll be able to step back exactly one year from today and restore everything as though it was today again.
My question on the offsite-
Yes.
-archiving. I'm, let me preface this by saying I'm not against this. I just am curious as to why, because when we, we, we would get the same information from the company where we're archiving as we could get from this, right? This shows my ignorance in IT, obviously.
No, 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 it's a very valid question. And this is something, if the company were to ship us the unit, that's in the event that either the unit failed or there was, well, some catastrophe here, where our unit was destroyed, the data was lost, something of that nature. The offsite backup is more of a, if there's an important file that's lost, where our backup unit is still intact, and there, there wasn't, for example, a virus that impacts the entire network, and there are important files lost that happened, and we didn't realize for a period of time, we'd be able to go to the offsite backup and recover those files from that, without having to either pay to have it shipped, because I, I'm willing to bet they wouldn't ship us the backup unit in the event that everything was still functional here. It, it's more of a, an emergency and a retention thing. The offsite one they consider, or the one hosted, that would be held by the company, is considered a disaster recovery.
Okay.
In the event of a disaster, it's designed to get you up and running as soon as possible.
Immediately, okay, okay. That answers my question, thank you.
I got a quick question.
All right.
Well, and this is probably more for Stacy, as far as the budgetary situation here. Is it, well, also, Sean, is this going to start immediately, or does it start January 1st, the three years? Or when would the three years start?
Um, it would be three years from whenever we sign the agreement, as far as I know.
Okay, and then that leads my question is, I don't think that, was this in our budget at all, Stacy?
Yes, there is budget there for this.
Okay, for next year, for 2015, or 2000, this year's budget?
2014 budget.
Excuse me?
This year.
This year's budget?
Yes, 20, yes, this year.
Okay, that's what I was checking, and how much is it? I mean, is, was this the amount that we were thinking about, basically 10,000 a year for the next three years? Is that kind of what we're looking at?
It will, it's ending up being, well, less than that, it's about 7,000 a year for the next three years.
But it's paid in one lump sum?
Yeah, it's paid in one-
It's not paid by the year?
No.
Okay.
Right, and we, and the budget is there for this year to make this payment.
All right.
Any further discussion? Questions for Sean? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Okay, please call a roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon? Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number D is action to approve agreement 1479, the East Central Region Communication Council Joint Powers Agreement between Brookings County and the City of Brookings, moved by Falcon. Right?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Falcon, moved by Wyeth. Okay, so we've got the agreement. Tom, you want to report, you got any comments to make on it? I know Abby, you as well, we've updated it, if you want to root quickly.
Yeah, I can just provide, I could provide an update.
Okay.
So, after, I don't know when you guys first came to me with this, at least a couple of months ago, and the E-911 Board wanted it, looked at for some potential changes. And I did a full overhaul, just because I'd never seen the document before, and there were some significant updates that needed to be made, just in updating statutes and making sure everything was accurate. The main concerns that I think the two boards wanted addressed were the split of the costs, if you look in the operation subsection, the budget's going to be administered by the city now, and it's split proportionately, two-thirds by the city, one-third by the county, that was a change. And we just also clarified in the insurance section, under section 12, that both parties do have to provide and maintain a certificate of insurance. So, other than that, just general updates, and the city council has already approved this agreement.
Any questions? Well, once again, thank you, Abby, she really tore through it and caught all kinds of stuff. And it's one of those things, you just keep doing what you're doing, and you don't look at why you're doing it. And it's good to have outside eyes and catch the fact that laws have changed, agreements, termination parts of it. There was all kinds of things, so, everything was working, but it's nice to have it up to date.
Well, I guess, probably as an original author of this document, back 30 years ago, things have changed, certainly, and, and needed to be cleaned up. I guess, a little bit my concern is, you know, when this thing first started, the participation of the county was the enact, enacting of the surcharge money, and that surcharge money then being sent over to the city to operate the center, and the city would provide services and so on and so forth. Not up until the last, you know, 10 years or whatever, there's been a decision made that the county should contribute additional funds, because the surcharge wasn't keeping up, and then it was a decision of the one-third, two-thirds, and so on and so forth. And I, I just caution that as we go through this, and whoever sits on that board, that if the city police department puts a budget together for the operation of the 911 center, I mean, they basically say, these are our needs, and we just nod our heads and say, okay, we got to realize what our costs are, that we're paying one-third above the surcharge cost, you know, and the city's paying two-thirds. Well, it's a city department, and we need, man, I guess I just caution into the future that if it's spelled out one-third, two-thirds, we need to make sure that when we approve that budget, that the, that the city comes and says, this is what, or police department basically comes and presents its budget, says this is what we need, you know, we realize what our costs are. Because if they come forward in five years and say, we need a new center, and we need a million dollars, that's one-third our cost. And so, you know, the way it's set up, the way I see it here, is that it has to be approved by both boards. And so, it does come to us, and I just don't want to get into that conflict in the future of saying, no, we don't support the budget. So, you know, it's, it's got to be with the understanding that we go through that process, because it was never set up to be a one-third, two-third until the last maybe 10 years, when, when the surcharge wasn't keeping up, and then decided we should split those costs. So, just, just those comments, I, I don't have a problem with the document, but I just bring those comments up.
I just, I've only been on that board one year, and it just seems like this in writing puts what, how it's been functioning. And so, if it's been functioning fine, I guess, and the fact it has to go to the full board, there is that protection. You know, you say, hey, this ain't working. And you can get out, there's a termination part, you know, so. Well, I think, you know, and I'm glad Commissioner Falcon brought that point up, because he and I have both been on that board at least a couple of times apiece. And it is important that we have, have the fund distribution down pretty clear as how it's going to be. But I, and I think Commissioner Falcon will agree that this can be a major expense to all the entities, both entities in the future, as we go on to the, the new gen, next generation, or whatever it is, policy that we're adopting, and, and the upgrades. And we're going to be, what, one of six in the state? Is that what they said, Tom? And, so I mean, you know, future commissioners have got to understand that, that as, as you allocate your funds, this is one that's important, because it's your emergency response, but it's not going to come cheap. It's just like the previous conversation we had with technology. And that's part of the reason I've always said that I can see these things happening, and so, anyone depending on discretionary funds has got to be careful, because future boards aren't probably going to have as much on the discretionary side, because these essentials are going to be costing that much more. So, thanks, Denny, for the comment. Abby, did you have anything to add to all our blabbering here?
Nope, I think we've covered everything.
Okay. With, with that, we'll please call a roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number E is to prove the fees referenced in the Genesee Wyoming Rail Services Application for roadway and rail property, and based on our, on our documentation that came in our packet, and there's going to be that slight adjustment, the chair would entertain a motion. For $3,000 for the application fee. Okay.
Sure.
Okay, moved by, moved by Wyeth, second by Krogman, to approve $3,000 for the application fee. Does everybody understand? Any questions, comments? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon? Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number F is action to approve payment application request, the amount of $1,63,485 to Daniel's Residential. Chair would entertain such a motion. Moved by Falcon, second by Miller. Questions, comments? Dick, do you have any staff comment?
No, that's, that's fine.
Okay. Department says they don't have any issues. Any commissioners have any comments? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Falcon?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
G is action to approve the payment application request, the amount of $40,090 to Daniel's Residential. Once again, discussion, entertain a motion, moved by Miller, second by Falcon. Discussion.
I got a quick question for Dick.
Sure.
Yeah, is this, is this the final payment? And, and have, have you done a walkthrough and a punch list and different stuff like that, that you feel comfortable that everything's taken care of?
Yes, and there's also some retainage yet that we have listed, but these are the last two payments that they are requesting.
Right, and I, and I saw the liquidated damages, that type of stuff, and, and that kind of thing. I just, I just want to make sure, you, you are retaining some back? How much are you retaining back?
Well, just on the liquidated damages, $4,600. But you, until everything is absolutely finalized, there's a small, usually it's 10% that they keep back just to make sure that everything is taken care of before we release that.
Okay, so we will maybe see another one down the road here after you release everything and everything looks good?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, thanks, Ryan, good questions. Anyone else? Please call a roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number H is action to automatically supplement the elections budget, line 104,4120, 4350, in the amount of $112,125. This is for the state have-a-funds for the DS850 scanner. Moved by Miller, second by Krogman, was it?
Nope.
Wyeth?
Wyeth.
Wyeth, second by Wyeth. Any discussion? I think we all pretty well understand what this is.
I think, just for clarification for anybody who's watching, is that these were funds that we already had that were being held by the state, and we put the money out initially, now we're being reimbursed.
Yep.
Licorice is not cheap.
No.
Please call a roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon? Wyeth? Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I, action, or item number I is action to approve resolution 1449. This is authorizing the purchase of the 2015 Chevrolet Traverse from Brookings Auto Mall, of course, based upon the state bid list. Chair would entertain a motion. Moved by Falcon.
Second.
Second by Miller. Think we've all pretty well thrashed this one over. We've discussed it and made the decision some time ago to wait until the 2015 bids came out. But if there are any questions by any commissioners, please bring them forward. If not, now, Dick, you don't have any comment on this, did you? Okay, then please call a roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Falcon? Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item number nine is our commission department director report. And here again, Stacy, I'll give you the liberty of staying where you're at, or if you'd like to come down to the front desk, you're welcome to do that as well.
One more meeting, I'm going to stay here, I think.
Okay.
Find my notes. And find my report, hold on, I'm getting there.
Three jobs at once.
I know, I'm, okay. Here we go. We've already discussed Jason leaving us. Just a reminder, 10th we're having, next, on Monday, we're having a going-away-for-party for him, Monday afternoon. The governor declared the days, I think I've been, sent some emails out on this as well, the day after Thanksgiving and the day after Christmas as our administrative leave days for this year. The day after Thanksgiving is fine, it is written into our employee handbook, as well as the union contracts, to say the day after Thanksgiving, however, it is written into our policy handbook and the union contracts as Christmas Eve Day. That is not the day that the governor is giving, it's the day after Christmas. I have been in contact with, Brian Nowak is the representative for the unions, and Abby, and I worked, mostly Abby, but we've worked together to get a couple of letters of understanding for his, for, for this, Brian Nowak to review, to make the change from Christmas Eve Day to the day after Christmas. I emailed those out to him on, must have been Monday, because it sure wasn't Tuesday or yesterday, so it must have been Monday, and I haven't heard back from him yet, if those, if, if he's okay with those yet. But I don't know that he has full-time hours in that office either, so I assume that I'll be hearing back from him shortly. If those, if he's okay with those letters, we'll bring them to the board at the next meeting for your approval as well, to move that administrative leave day. It's always been Christmas Eve if the governor gives it, all full-time regular employees get that. If they have to work, in the case of our highway and sheriff's office, then they do get an administrative leave day to use at, use at another time. But we're still working on that, so that may be coming before you, hopefully at the next meeting. Courthouse roof was repaired, it was actually a couple Fridays ago now. A couple of men just showed up, and unfortunately, John wasn't here, but Keith was able to take them up, and, and- but Keith was able to take them up and, and, um, get them working. And then, when I was made, I was actually off that day, but I was made aware of it, so I contacted John and he relayed where he thought the issues were. So, I got that relayed back to, um, Keith, and he visited with the guys, and they went back and did another look and found some more things. So, they were up there for a while on that, a couple Fridays ago now, it'll be two weeks ago tomorrow. Um, however, they sent us a bill that said, you know, they, these weren't, um, these weren't covered under our warranty. I haven't had a chance, I've been a little bit busy this week, um, to call the, the Firestone, our company, to, to question that, I just wanna make sure, verify with them that these indeed were not costs covered under our warranty, but once I do that, then I'll, um, more than likely probably be, be presenting the bill. It was just under $500 to get those fixed. Um, and then we wait until spring to see that they got fixed.
Stacy, that's where I was gonna correct you, as a person that's had a few roofs, um, it's been worked on, hasn't been repaired, you'll know this spring.
Right, yes, well, it'll, yes, we'll find out in the spring. Um, eight-county meeting is coming up on Monday, November 17th. I have heard from a few of you that you're going, I don't know that I've heard. Don, are you planning on going to the eight-county meeting on the 17th?
At this, at this point, no.
No? Dennis? Do you, no? Okay, so Stephanie, Tom, and Ryan have all said that they will go, so, um. Extension board appointments, I was questioned, we had some questions at the last meeting about whether those could, um, if there were term limits, and they, there is not. Um, we do have a list of people, of folks who are, um, whose terms expire at the end of the year, uh, for our volunteer board appointments, and so we'll eventually be putting those out and bringing those to you. Um, I, the question was brought up, um, if current members on those boards wish to reapply, do you, I don't know if we have a policy on this, do you give them preference over new applicants? Or do you open it up to all candidates? Um, specifically, you know, the hospital board has questioned that already too. There's, Jim Brewer is, um, his position is, ends at the end of the year, and he is interested and is, the application I believe has been sent, I've sent them, you know, but I don't know if we open that up to anyone, or do you, uh, what is your, give me some direction, I'll do what you want me to do.
I, 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 go ahead. Well, I just think, it's one of those unpleasant things, but most of the time, you're just still thankful when somebody volunteers for the board, yeah, that, you know, and we did have the issue with the hospital board last time, and we actually had people, and I think we just made a choice, and I don't know if there was any preference given, I think that's to each board member, uh, to have their own preference. Uh, just as a thought, not to, in case, I'm sure the ones that are, terms are expired, they'll be informed or know that they're expired. Um, not to push them off, I don't even know who it is, but I wonder if we could have Sonia put it in the, since extension board is four H, that's it, uh, they put it in their newsletter, that there are positions open in case somebody else is interested. And, uh, maybe contact her and put it in the newsletter and see if there's some other people interested. That, that's my thought, anyway.
And I'm not sure that we should give preference either. I, I think we open it up and we deal with it on a case-by-case basis, uh, that usually is not a problem, because usually we're just darn lucky to fill, fill the positions, but, um, no, I, I, we haven't before, and I, I don't think that we should, um, any of them.
Okay.
I guess the question I have is, uh, especially these boards that expire January 1st. And I did talk to Jim Brewer last night, asking the question is, you know, is it gonna be approved before, with this board or the next board? And I guess being that expires the first of the year, I guess I would think he would, you know, we would want to, whatever the rest of the board wants to make a decision, but do you do that in December? Because he, because he, because that position, that particular one expires January 1st?
Michelle and I can sit down and go through all of those, and we could get those advertised, and then...
I, I think it's appropriate to do that ahead of time, and
Yep.
especially the ones that expire January 1st.
Yep.
So they know if they're gonna attend the meeting in January or not.
Cause I, we don't have a, our meeting isn't until the 7th of January, is it, our first meeting?
Yeah, the 6th or 7th, I can't remember exactly.
Yeah, so I, that's a very valid point.
I, I think that's a good question, it had me stumped for, but, you know, state government goes through this, you change governors, and the previous governor has people appointed, the new governor's gotta live with, uh, the other appointees until their term expires. So, um, I think we need to have them ready to go on the 1st of January. I think that's a good question.
Extension board technically expires on the 10th of January, so those you...
Really?
Yeah. Uh-huh. That's in statute.
Act 13, there's a lot of those days.
That's, that's why there's, I, that's why I thought there was someplace in statute it said they get, they serve two terms and... You didn't find that, Tom? No? It said something about...
Statute in there, and, uh, it's back to that, those old statutes.
Are they two-year, are they two-year terms?
No, it's one-year terms.
They're just one-year terms.
So, so the consensus is if you look, you're gonna look back at any board that expires January 1st?
Okay.
We'll have, have to take care of.
We'll take care of in December.
Anything, even on the 10th, that can be handled afterwards.
Afterwards.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, um...
Yeah, just a clarification, yeah, it's everybody, you said, they, they all expire.
Mm-hmm.
Right, okay, but it is the 10th, and that is that old, yeah.
The extension board is that way, I think there's other boards that expire at different times.
Ryan, you had a comment?
Yeah, so does that mean we are gonna open it up to everybody for all of these when we get this list? That, uh, and if we do what I agree with, I, I don't think the person that's there just automatically gets it. I think we need to look at it, you know, and open it up and see who else is willing to do it. How are we gonna get that word out there that there, uh, there's spots that are coming to an end that are available? Are we gonna put it, you know, in the newsletter, are we gonna put it in the paper, or how are we gonna do that?
Well, Stacy, you normally publish, do you not? That we have...
We publish it on the website, I don't know that we, we publish it in...
You just put it on the website.
It's been in the paper.
Has it been in the paper?
I thought so too, yeah.
Yeah, we can do that, Michelle and I'll work on that and get that taken care of.
I thought so.
And public, we'll, I'll see what has been done in the past and get it...
And I think that's, I think that Commissioner Wyeth has a very good idea. I think we should have Sonia put that one out
Yep.
in her newsletter, I mean, we have that, so we just will use it.
Right. Okay, anything else on that? Now, health fair was last Thursday, a week ago already, um, that went well. Vendors were set up in this room, and, um, we had a number of employees participate in the health screening, and we did not win the food drive this year, but, um, it was still successful, so the trophy goes across the hall. Yeah, some people won. Commissioner Falcon? Um, you can see, I won't go through all of the...
I just, I just want my 12 and a half.
I, I'll let you, um, go through the dates, just a couple of things to note. Next Tuesday, the offices are closed due to Veterans Day, and then the 12th and 13th, Laura and I will be heading to Pier to attend a conference, so, um, otherwise, I'll let you take a look at the rest of that. Um, some additions to my report that have come in since we published it, um, John made me aware that, um, there is a compressor for a chiller that burned out in this building. These are, the, this compressor cools the IT rooms, and if you recall, we had pretty serious issues with overheating IT rooms. Um, they're working on it, he, John says, we should expect a fairly large, late, some large labor costs on this one. Yeah, so key, that's, uh, that's going on, keep that in mind. Um, the local infrastructure improvement program, that quarterly project status report for that grant for the Novita Road is due on the 11th, so I have it in my hands. I don't know, um, I don't have old ones to look at, I don't, I can't find them anywhere. Um, I, I've got the right form, I've been in touch with the gal that, um, that I, I send these to. Um, since nothing has happened, I don't think it's gonna be too difficult to fill it out. But just so you know that I'm, I'm on top of it, I'm planning on sending it in either tomorrow or Monday, so it's there by the 11th, that's when it's due.
Wouldn't there be a copy on the other end of that report?
I could ask.
Yeah, see, is this the ag one or the economic development one?
It's the economic development one.
Okay. The one that guy Hunter, was his name? I remember the name Hunter in his name.
Yeah.
Yeah, funny thing.
But I can't say the last name.
Tom, can you, uh, speak up, I can't hear you very well.
Oh, okay, Ryan.
Thank you.
Keep everything a secret.
Ryan, do you remember the, do you remember the, the individual, uh, his name, his first name is Hunter? When we were dealing with the state on...
Roberts. Hunter Roberts.
Hunter Roberts.
Yeah, I think that's his mom, yeah.
I think you're right, okay.
Yeah, sounds good.
Um, I don't know if Michelle had passed this along, she just forwarded me and, or, she sent me an email that there was a concerned citizen that has, um, is concerned that the bars not, both in the city, and I think she's contacted the city as well, but just in general, even out in the county, um, are not following the over-serving customers' rules and regs. I think in light of the, um, accident at the grain elevator last week, that, um, she was bringing that. She's, just feels that maybe some of those rules aren't being followed. Um, also, Bob's not here, Megan's not here, but, um, Megan received an email actually from Melanie Haber, the finance officer up in White, and they are, she is going to be, um, doing a grant to get some money for a remodel project that they have for their McKnight Hall in White. And she was asking, um, she'd asked initially the county development office, but, um, I thought it maybe, they thought too, Bob, and thought that maybe it could come from this board, uh, they're asking for just a letter of support to send along with that grant, um, supporting that project, that remodel project on the McKnight Hall. They're not asking for money, they're just asking for support. And we do use that facility for elections, um, and some of the, um, improvements that they're making would also improve that location for voting as well, so I, you know...
I think, I think general consensus of the board is to move forward.
I think Megan was looking at going, I was to let her know, and she said she could draft something, um, for us.
Ryan, I can't see your head bobbing, but I'm assuming it's bobbing in a yes direction?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I think that's all I have, unless you have any other questions from me.
Questions for Stacy, any of you board members?
Do, do we know if there's a joint powers board meeting on next Thursday?
Uh, I haven't heard, that is when it is supposed to be scheduled for, that's the, um, regularly scheduled time, but I haven't heard. The topic of, um, hanging that, that patriotic quilt and the Avenue of Flags plaque from the Veterans Service Office, I did pass that along to Jeff Walden, and he did say that that's something that the board should be made aware of and approve. So, I'm assuming that there's, since there's items to discuss, that there will be a meeting. I will be gone next Thursday, um, because I'll be in Pier for the Safety and Loss Conference.
Well, I guess it'd be nice to, if there's things like that, that are gonna be on the agenda, to have that discussion with this board before we go to that meeting, to know what this board's feelings are on that issue, instead of us just trying to make that decision without, or just saying, well, we'll go back to the council, commission, and ask them, uh, you know, what decision. And I guess one thing that I, I truly wanna get resolved before I leave is, we've got a lot of issues with the, around the elevators and that wood and stuff, and I think we need, whatever, however it needs to be resolved, it needs to be resolved, we need to get it fixed. We can't let a new building like this look like it's 20 years old because of just some pieces of laminate pulling loose and...
John did go around, it was maybe earlier this week, with, and glued some of that, um, the, yeah, down, that was starting to peel up, I don't know how long that will hold it, um...
But I think even for him, to go around and, and give us an idea exactly how many places that need to be fixed.
Yeah, I could ask him.
You know, I'm not gonna, you know, we can argue forever whose responsibility it is, but it's just gotta be repaired, and then we can worry about it later. It can't, it can't be that big of a deal, it's, you know, it's gonna cost money, but you gotta fix it.
Right.
I, I guess if that's the concurrence of this board, that, I bring that concern forward. If you have the same concern, if not, if you don't care, I guess, you know, it's fine.
I think that's a definite concern, and, and, um, I know that there are conflicting opinions as to what the, whose fault it is, and, but I agree, it needs to be fixed. We have a beautiful new building, and that looks terrible. And, and as to the other, um, I think we ought to be able to hang things in our beautiful new building.
Um, this, with Jason's resignation and moving on, I, I visit with Laura, and glad she walked in. And Stacy, I, I somehow think I'd like to see a recommendation for a exit interview policy that some, that the commission do see. I don't wanna see about the weeds, you know, somebody spraying weeds just for the summer, or something, or summer help, but I think there's a certain level, and I'm not saying what it is, that we should see the exit interviews, and, uh, what comes from them. And, uh, just as a manager, management tool, and, uh, I was wondering if Laura and Stacy could sit down and maybe propose a policy that we would have that, um, that'd be appropriate. Obviously, if somebody was a summer help and said, I got beat up by my supervisor every, well, would, that would rise up to our attention, but, I mean, I, you've been around a, a long, in many human resource situations, and I think whatever you, I'd like to see something that would be appropriate for our management.
Okay.
I think that's excellent, good job.
Are you done?
I'm finished, yes.
You're completed, okay.
Yes.
Abby? State's attorney?
Yeah, just a couple of quick updates, then I'm sure I'll have some more updates during the work session, and obviously the executive session. Uh, yesterday, the 5th, our EPSAR team was asked to speak to a victimology class on campus. EPSAR is the Eastern Plain Sexual Assault Response Team. It's comprised of prosecutors, law enforcement, victim witness assistants, nurses, uh, domestic abuse advocates. And so a number of us were able to go, and it felt like it was a really good opportunity to show how all of our resources and agencies in the community are working together to prevent future assaults and help people that have been victimized by assaults cope with that and find resources. So that was a good opportunity. And then next week, on November 11th, I'm actually gonna be assisting CASA, Court Appointed Special Advocates Program, they're training new volunteers this month, so I go in and do some trainings and explain the court process to them. Uh, and on November 18th, your next commission meeting, I will not be available, I have a trial that whole week, so I will be unavailable, but obviously I'll review the agenda and pack it ahead of time, and can converse if we have any issues that need to be addressed, and can obviously pass anything along with Stacy. Uh, I do just want to, uh, again, extend my thank you to Jason. Our office doesn't have many mapping needs, or GIS needs, but in the interim periods where we've been short on technology staff, he has just gone above and beyond, and he does it with a smile on his face, and I've never once heard him complain, and he's just a phenomenal colleague to work with, and my office will certainly miss him. And in the same department, Sean has been very helpful with us as well, uh, also wonderful to work with, uh, very pleased with how attentive he's been to just the, the couple of needs that we've had in our office, so, uh, do appreciate that. We found out that we have the oldest technology of any county employee office, so we, we had some room in our budget this year, so Sean's helping us do some updates, so you'll see some claims coming down the pipeline, and just felt like it probably was time to update those, uh, that being the case. Um, and I wanna thank Mr. Burke, he and I were able to do a quick highway tour last week with all the highway issues that have been coming up, and my role legally, it really helped me to be able to physically see what the concerns were, where the issues are at, 34th Avenue, 213th, uh, just some things that Dick knew would be coming down the pipeline. So I appreciate his time, he took time out of his day to kinda give me a, a one-on-one of what's going on with that. And, uh, finally, I certainly wanna congratulate Commissioner Miller and our upcoming commissioners. Uh, it'll be a, a new board and new adventures, and I, I, I can't say enough good things about our outgoing commissioners Falcon and Chairperson Larson. If you wanna see commitment to county government and a passion for county government, it is exemplified in these two, so I wanna thank you for your time and service.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner, that concludes, Abby, then Commissioner... Okay, Commissioner, uh, that concludes Abby, then Commissioner reports will start on the far end. How about Remote? Ryan, did you have anything you'd like to report to us?
Sure. Um, just, uh, since last meeting, uh, Commissioner Wysett and I were in the Hobo Day Parade and, uh, walked through that, and that was a good time, and my little ones, uh, got to hand out some candy and some Baby Bell cheese, and that was, that was fun and enjoyed by all. It was a beautiful day and a great weekend. Um, also, uh, the 27th, I, I attended the Highway Needs, uh, presentation by Senator Valley there, and, and, uh, he kinda, kinda said what he thought. You know, I don't think our county's in, is in tough shape as some of the other ones, but we do have a heck of a lot of bridges, and, uh, something we're gonna have to look at over the next, uh, long-term planning is, uh, how we, uh, take care of those, because I, I just don't think, like he said, we're not gonna have another stimulus project come in that's gonna have a windfall of money to help us take care of them. I think we're gonna have to do it on our own and, uh, with, with the help of the state as much as they can, uh, we're gonna have to kinda take care of ourselves, and, uh, and that's okay. It's, uh, up for the challenge and, uh, we'll see what we can get done over the next, uh, years. Uh, also, October 30th, uh, we had a BDC workforce meeting. Um, the governor has put out some, some funds, uh, for projects, um, I think it's a million dollars, uh, towards, uh, helping workforce, uh, providing workforce, or improving workforce, or attracting workers to our area. Uh, but you have to come up with a project, and you have to do it very quickly, I think, the end of November, and so the BDC put together a workforce, um, group that was going to try to come up with a project that we could submit to the state and ask for funding. And so it's a, it's a fast-track type of thing. Again, they're not giving you a bunch of time, but, uh, we don't wanna, you know, not take advantage of the opportunity for funds there that could come to, uh, to our county, uh, for workforce. And, and I was, uh, as the county representative, I was, uh, uh, on that board, and, and we put together a project, had a very good meeting. Uh, there was about 15, 16 of us in there, came up with a pretty neat idea that, uh, would possibly include the Boys and Girls Club assisting. Um, there were school districts, uh, Two Valley was there, and, uh, and Brooklyn School District Leadership was there. Also had our, uh, state workforce development, uh, uh, people there, so it was, you know, the kind of decision makers were there. They came up with a pretty good project, and I think they're gonna work pretty hard to get something to the, the state and see if we can get some, get some funds towards, uh, workforce development, so, uh, very, uh, very good meeting there. And I, and we'll be working forward to that, and you'll probably hear some more stuff as we, we get down the road there. Um, let me see here. Also, I wanna, uh, thank Jason for his work and his commitment. Uh, he has been instrumental in our, um, in our changeover of our leadership there of, uh, technical assistance and also, um, all the, the new, uh, technology people that we've had to hire there. He's, he was invaluable during that time for us. Like I said, he always did it, uh, you know, with a smile, and also agreed to go above and beyond his job. He will be sorely missed. Um, but again, uh, you know, Laura's working hard to see if we can, uh, find a replacement, and I'm sure we will, so, that'll be good. But thank you, Jason. I appreciate all your work. Also, Stacy, thank you so much for doing double duty here, uh, on, uh, elections and minutes and everything like that. Uh, elections went well, it sounds like, um, sounds like everything went good, and we appreciate your effort going above and beyond, uh, what you've done there and the changeover, so, thank you. Um, I will be gone Monday for Jason's. Yeah, I won't get back till, uh, Monday night, I think, so I'll be back, but, uh, won't be able to meet Jason's going away party there, so. Otherwise, uh, I think that's it.
Okay, thanks, Ryan. Anybody got questions for Ryan? Okay. Move on to the end of the line, Mr. Wysett.
Okay. Well, I gotta thank Vicky and Stacy for an excellent election. I think people really love the vote centers and that we stuck with it, even though it gets complicated and, but for, on our end, but not for the voters. And that's what's about voter convenience, and, and thanks for running a great election. Um, on the 27th, I was here with many of you when, uh, we got the, you know, the road report, legislative road report. Uh, and, um, I just gotta throw out, if you need anything done, ask Commissioner Miller to line up something, and, um, about 10 minutes out of walking out of here, I had a meeting lined up with Banner, when Ryan and I spent the afternoon with him. And, uh, clarified some things, and you heard the report, and we're continuing to work forward on that. Um, and then had that day a growth partnership meeting, another one on the 31st, and another one tomorrow. They are looking at something that's, you know, a company we can't talk about, but, uh, at this point, and, um, but probably the key thing is they're looking at going in a different direction as far as, uh, business plan. And when, uh, more gets laid out, I think you guys should, uh, well, we'll find out. The full board's meeting tomorrow. I was at part of a subcommittee, and, um, if, once they finalize this, I'll give you a full report, 'cause we are a major contributor in that, um, and was. Work with that. Uh, I did take the advantage yesterday, Dick hopefully didn't wreck it, but I, uh, Dick's a, a typing, but before you met, I caught Susan Tracy and the railroad together, and I groveled. I thanked them for all their work and the work that they're doing, and, um, and I do appreciate, uh, what she, Susan Tracy has, and the amount she's done and will be doing for us, and, uh, I, I just wanted to get in there. I said, I won't be out there to meet with you, 'cause I'm not an engineer, I'm not a railroad guy, and I'm not, you know, but, uh, I am a good beggar, you know, for good ser, for services, so I, I did visit with them, and hopefully I did some good there. Um, you know, as I, I'm on the East Central Behavioral Health, and you know, we took over the city's, uh, share and, and there's services that are provided, and Marty, uh, uh, I, I became concerned over certain things that possibly could come in on the city's side, since they gave up the money. And, uh, when you're printing out statutes like, uh, Stacy or Abby, uh, there's two of them that I, you know, once in a while when I'm bored, I look through codified law, and, uh, and to make sure that we're legal and, and not asking for forgiveness, uh, you know, like I normally do. Uh, but 27A, 5-9, I think the commissioner should see, and that's pretty just allows us to give money to an organization like that. But 27A-5-10, uh, specifies on how that money's going to be done, and we're fine. But it could come up, it kinda came up in our discussion, East Central Behavioral Health. We had several discussions with Southeast, and, um, and that's made up of different counties, and I asked how it worked. Well, that led to one question, who led to another question and another, and fi, eventually, uh, came to this, and we're, way we're doing it is right, but I wanna make sure that our services that are being provided to the county and weren't perfectly clear, 'cause we do not have a memorandum of understanding, as I understand it, 'cause I asked for one, um, at East Central Behavioral Health. Marty, do you have a written? No. And I like those things, 'cause it kinda puts things in black and white, it's, uh, how you feeling that day, but there is some statutes, so if those two statutes, if you could send them out to the commission, you could look at them. And, uh, yes, we meet the requirements, and, but there is a percentage, uh, once the fees of use get to a certain level that you need to be, we need to be aware of as commission, so, that's it.
I'd ask you this question, Commissioner Wysett, uh, and, and even Abby would probably, could, you referenced it by number, and of course that didn't register with me, but I, there is a statute we talked about that, uh, is that the one you referred to?
Yeah, I got two statutes.
We need to change the verbiage and to include social or sus, uh, something.
Well, it says mental health center, and.
Well, I'm not, I wa, I was referring to the broader one as far as, uh, contributing, um, Abby, I think you had brought it up on, or you had looked it up for us. Uh, I, I've got a copy of it at home. I should show it to you. It's just a simple change of word or two, so that it broadened the scope a little bit, so it fit what count, not only us, but what counties are doing, because we're not in concert with the statute right now.
I think that's another statute about, um, education.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a different one. This is a, that, this is a different one.
Okay, okay.
Uh, and so I'm just asking that Stacy or Abby, just send it out to you guys, and just take a look at it, so you're well aware of what the law is, and we're fine, um, but, uh, and maybe send one to Marty, uh, if you're not aware of it. There is a little trip in there about paying extra later, and, uh, so I wasn't aware of it, and, uh, I thought it was just totally non-mandated, and it still is, but then you're gonna have fees upfront, which the city may, may or may not be facing for services because of their switching of funds, and, uh, that's just got my attention and got me digging around, so, uh, just pass that along. But it is a different statute than one you're thinking.
Okay, but even the one that, that we referred to earlier is, is just, it's kind of a, an update clarification, uh, by adding education or whatever it is to it, to make, so that.
Something about recreation.
Yeah.
And education and something else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've got it, Abby, and I think we had you look it up one time, or you had, you had seen it, and it just, it's something that maybe we should give to our legislators, because I think it's just a, a kind of a housekeeping little thing, so that what counties are doing are in concert with that particular statute. Okay, Commissioner Miller?
October 23rd, I attended the domestic abuse meeting. Uh, we had a training session, which was interesting. And the big thing there is that we are losing our associate director, and so they're interviewing for that position. It's, it's unfortunate. It, they were a good team. I too attended the Hobo Day Parade, and then October 27th, I attended the Highway Needs meeting presented by Senator Valley, and I am hopeful that the state will come up with some good ideas in this legislative session to help us, because they are well aware of the fact that the federal money is not going to be there. They are also well aware of the fact that roads and bridges are a huge, huge issue, and Senator Tiedemann talks about that a lot, and that's encouraging to me to know that the people that we're sending out there are well aware of our, our needs here, and I'm hopeful that in this session, they're gonna come up with something that will help us. So, as well as us digging in and trying to help ourselves, which I also feel is very, very important. On October 30th, I attended the health fair. I, it's always kind of enjoyable to do that. Um, I'm glad we put it on. Thank you, girls, for doing that. Um, I've received numerous calls and some emails on that 30-second stop sign, all in favor of keeping it there. All asking that we keep it. Um, so I guess we'll see what happens. Also, I wanna take this opportunity to thank Stacy for doing double duty, for what she, for a pretty good period of time here. I know this has not been easy, and the elections are a full-time job all in themselves, and then she also takes care of us. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all your hard work. Um, you know, we do a lot of stuff, but there's one person always at the bottom of that, that doesn't get a lot of recognition, and, and she's the one that keeps us on the straight and narrow, between her and Abby. And, and I really wanna thank those gals for all they've done, and Stacy, hopefully now you can just be our director and pass it on to your, uh, capable colleagues down the line here, so thank you very much.
You know, I forgot to mention, I was in, but, uh, Ryan mentioned the Hobo Day Parade, and what a pleasure, Ryan, it was to be with your, uh, two of your children, and they were great. Uh, they're not ready for commissioners, because they did not allocate our resources, which was candy appropriately for the entire parade, but their enthusiasm, it was a, a great time.
Yeah, it was.
Was, my question was, Ryan, did Wysett walk the, the whole way, or did he ride his bike part of the way?
No, he, he walked, he walked the whole way.
He did?
It was good. Uh, and what he's talking about is, uh, we had some candy there for the kids, and my youngest was, uh, uh, a little, uh, little easily swayed by the kids along the fair, so he barely made the turn and had any candy left. And Carly was a little more frugal, but this is her second time around, so she's got a little more experience, so. Dave is gonna be a work in progress, uh, but, uh, Tom and, Tom and I handed out the Baby Bell, and, uh, that was good. I, I, uh, had to be a little careful there. I about took somebody's head off tossing it, so next time I gotta learn there, I gotta hand them out, so.
Well, he, they, they had fun, and that's what it's all about.
That was a good day.
It was a great day. Mr. Falcon?
What that I did attend also, the highway, um, assessment or study that's being done, and, and there's some good ideas, whether how many of them make it through peer and out of leg, out of legislation, but, you know, everybody understands the need for more funding, and I think they're looking at all different avenues and seeing what they come up with, and and they really got a handle around statewide what's going on with the roads and, uh, county roads and so on, so it's, it's, it looks promising if they can get things through peer. Uh, the afternoon of the 27th, I had a 911, uh, conference call, and we ended up hiring, uh, a, signed a contract with GeoCom for our GIS services, uh, for our next generation project, which is one half of it, and so it's, it's been a long process. We've been working on it for over a year, and, and there'll be a great company to work with, setting up the GIS, statewide GIS system. Um, and then on the 30th, I did attend the, uh, stopped into the health fair and visited some of the vendors and so on, and it's always nice to see the employees getting an opportunity to do the same, and, uh, and I did, I did register, because I brought some food.
I brought food.
Well, and lucky enough to get, win a $25 gift certificate, so, gift card, so that was, it's all, like I say, it's good, a good, good event, and I know it takes time to, to organize those, and wanna thank the staff for doing so, and again, thank Stacy for the sta, and her staff for everything for the, the election. I know it's a lot of hard work, and, and, and I did vote at the Activity Center, and it was about 11 o'clock, and didn't really have any problems at all, um, you know, plenty of booze, so, I mean, they were pretty much full, but it was just a process, just moving through, and it went very quick, and, and the scanning of your license and the, the people, they were smiling, and they didn't have to write every name down, was, you know, the staff there was very, you know, everything really worked very smooth until I went out to the parking lot and almost got backed into, but I had to honk my horn four times, and she finally stopped before she backed into the side of my vehicle, but the parking, the parking is very tight in there, you know, and, and that's probably the downside of using that facility, is really tight parking in, and, you know. Anyway, uh, got out of there without too much damage, and again, I wanna thank Jason, uh, for his work and, and hate to see him go, but I think, you know, anybody that can advance their career, that's the opportunity, that's what you work for, so, thanks, Jason.
Okay, any questions for Commissioner Falcon?
Well, I attended some of the, uh, the Hobo Day activities, uh, in behalf of the SDSU president's invitation and a couple of things, and it was, uh, it was good, and I, I could see from the beginning, uh, uh, that Ryan was gonna run out of, or his, his son was gonna run out of candy real quick, but, but that was good. It's good to see him participate. Probably the, uh, the, uh, one of the things that's taken a lot of time up to this point that isn't directly, uh, from this table, but it is, it has long-lasting effects on this table, and that's the position on the EPA Advisory Board and the work that we've been doing on the Waters of the U.S., uh, proposal. And, um, I, I could've brought it along today, but we, we finally got our final draft on our recommendations to the administrator, and we approved our letter of transmittal to her. It, our, our summer's work is about 100 pages thick, um, trying to address all the issues, uh, and, uh, I still say that, uh, commissions of the future are gonna be dealing with water, and water management is going to be a big issue, and I, uh, our committee, um, is, is moved away from the term drainage to water management, because anytime you're altering the course of nature, you're managing it in, in a way that, that the good Lord didn't intend it to be managed. And so we've gotta talk about water management, not, not drainage, but, uh, uh, that, that's probably the, been, been consuming a lot of my time um, for this week. The, uh, I also wanna thank, uh, just like everyone else, Jason, but I think more important, and fantastic job he done, and, and I wish him well in his future career. But I wanna thank our, our commissioners and, and our staff, uh, for all the good work they do, and, uh, and, uh, as I travel around and I visit with other counties, we do not ever find a county that has the team effort that our, that our department heads, our other elected officials, and our commissioners all working together. And, uh, so I think, once we're giving kudos, we need to give it to everybody, because, uh, we got a lot of people in this county, that are working for this county, that do a lot of good work. I, uh, we talk about the election and the election process, uh, I don't think there's probably another county that had the process go any smoother than Brookings Counties. I think our, our staff done an excellent job. I voted at the Swiftel Center just to see how that was being accepted. Other than that it's a little ways to walk, you know, I mean, probably compared to some of the others. It went smooth and I voted a short, well around 1 o'clock to give it a little time. And there was 240 some, I think at that time they said, had voted. But like, like Stephanie said, they just scanned my driver's license and give you your little ticket, you got your ballot. And so then out of curiosity, I went down to the Tabernacle and visited with those folks. And they said everything was going smooth and I think they were, at the time I seen them, around 300. And there were people coming and going. I was going to do the same at Bethel Baptist and when I pulled into that parking lot, it was so full and so many people coming and going. I thought, they don't need me sticking my nose in to see how things are going. Obviously, it's working well and that, so it was good. The, the one thing I, Dennis talked to us a little bit earlier and I want to bring it up again, is the fact that the 911 agreement. You brought up some very good points. And for those of you that are going to be here in the future, those, those types of agreements, not just that one, but all of them. You need to keep your eye on because they are a working document. And that's kind of what this one is in that regard. But just, just watch those things as we move forward in cooperative efforts with other agencies. With that, I think it pretty well covers it for my report. Does anyone have anything else? We've got our correspondence that we received and lots of it. I did, as Tom mentioned, I did go up and view the quote unquote spill. Looked to me like it had been professionally handled by, by management by the time I got there. I don't think any real bad things happened. It's just one of those things that can happen. And, and I related to Tom, it might have been just operator. You know, could have created the seepage for a bit. But anyway, it was, it was handled, it was taken care of and, and that was good, so. Okay, I think now we move on, if we're done with Commissioner reports, move on into the canvas of the election. And I will turn it over to our election officials. And that's going to be Stacy, Kristen, Vicki, who all is going to carry us forward.
Ryan, you didn't want to stay with us any longer, did you?
Well, I'm not, I'm not going to sign it since I'm not there to actually verify anything like that too. My question was then, Executive Session, Work Session, what's the plan moving forward here for the rest of the morning here?
Well, canvas and then we'll do Work Session. Well, no, canvas and then we'll do Executive Session. And then after that, we'll adjourn and then come back and do the Work Session.
Okay, well, I'd like to be involved in the Executive Session there. And if you think canvassing, you know, you're thinking within the next 15, 20 minutes, half hour, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, it's not going to take too long.
Okay, why don't you, why don't you just give me a call back?
Okay.
After you're done canvassing and Executive Session and I'll, I'll get back in with you.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks. The floor is yours, ladies.
It's my first time, you know.
You guys, this is your first time?
Yeah, well, Ryan and I got elected last time, so we weren't here for the meeting that, you know.
For the canvassing. I think you guys were at the meeting if I remember right.
Your memory is probably better than mine. I think we started coming while we were coming before, we just kept coming.
Okay.
Okay. No, I think it's okay. It's, well, this is the only one that's on orange, so it doesn't show up real, real well. But usually we have you open up the poll books, there's no poll books to open. So I'm just going to go through each of the recap sheets and tell you what the scanner printed off of each one. And so you can compare and then if we have any questions, feel free to shoot them out. Should we wait for Stephanie to get back though? Yes, yeah.
Give her a couple of minutes.
Well, she's coming back. Kind of baffles me, it was the absentee ballots different than the regular ballots? That just like Minion County was complaining about, they were having problems only with their absentee. And talking about getting food spilled on them and stuff like that. I mean, I, I can't imagine there was a lot of, it just makes, doesn't make sense that it was only absentee ballots and why would it just be that?
We had probably the most issue with absentee ballots as well. You know, they, they go out to, when you mail out an absentee ballot, you don't know.
Okay.
How they're treated. And you don't see the ballot when it comes back, obviously it's sealed up. So you know, you don't, you don't get a chance to look it over. The new scanner worked wonderfully. It was just very sensitive to, some of the ballots were actually filled in correctly. I mean, in, in the ovals, the pencil markings were just really light. And if that was the case, it wasn't reading them.
So.
We had people, if, if they took a mark and moved it way outside an oval, if they filled in outside the oval a lot. It would spit it out, the scanner would not like it and put it into a different kind of an output to be resolved by the Resolution Board. We had some where people actually wrote, if you know, if you recall on ballots, there's like black marks along the, your left side of that ballot. And it's how that, that's what the scanner reads is those back, black tracking marks. We had several that were people marked on those black tracking marks. And as soon as you make a mark and disrupt that, that's what the scanner sees. Somebody had done it in a blue pen and it didn't like that.
It was more of the ones that you mailed out probably that caused the problem.
Yeah, I mean, once we got through the absentees, the absentee board by far had the most Resolution Board ballots.
Okay, so when you, when you try to resolve a ballot, what disqualifies the ballot if it kicks out and you try to resolve it?
Nothing disqualifies it really. It kicks out and what we do is we had, and we ended up bringing on two, two of the election workers. Who, the first two that came in, they were the lucky ones because they were the first ones that came in, but they volunteered to do it. Sit as the Resolution Board. It's a Republican and a Democrat and the ballots that the scanner doesn't like. We have a numbering system. They number that ballot that was voted by the voter. And they recreate another ballot and mark it accordingly, so we can have, we can track it. Here's the original, here's the copy. And they, they discuss amongst the two of them, decide voter intent on all of the races. And then we send their ballot that they marked through the machine, so the machine will read it. Where the time lies is that it takes time, especially when the ballot is as long as it was on Tuesday, to mark all of those races. And so, because they're, they're physically filling in ovals with pencils. So we had two of those boards going on Tuesday night.
Next question I had a constituent ask me, when he comes in, we came in to vote absentee and you get a sticker, absentee ballot, with your name on it. That goes on your envelope with your ballot in that envelope, is that correct?
Yes.
So that anybody who really wanted to know how a particular person voted could look down at the, at the name and open the ballot.
It's always been that way. You've always either signed your name or you put the label on the ballot. The label just saves us time for processing absentee.
You just asked a question. I didn't know, I've never voted absentee, so.
Yep, that's always how it's been. The absentee board processes those ballots. Honestly, they don't have time to go and stare at how everybody voted. But you know, they're directed to have, they're a group, they work in groups of four. And they look at the, they look at the envelope. They highlight the name that, you know, that this, okay, this person's voted, we've got their ballot. Someone slits it open, the ballot goes one way, the envelope goes another way. You know, there's, I guess, it's human nature, there's probably always that chance that, you know, that person who's processing it is going to see how somebody voted. But that's the process.
I told him I'd ask the question.
That's, and that's the process we have in place and it's how we've always, it's how we've, it's always been that way. Actually, even when we used to process absentees out at the vote, or at the precincts themselves. You'd still have it in an envelope that you had your signature on. So those people would know that you, it's your ballot and they'd sign you off on the registration book and.
We better get on before Stephanie has to make another trip.
Okay, so we'll start with the absentee precinct. This is the one we probably had the most issues with, obviously on election night. We had the luxury of Larry Halt was the superintendent and then Ken A. Hearts is kind of the second in command. And they've done the absentee board since I started the absentee board, I think in '06. They, they sit then as my Resolution Board on Tuesday night. So they hang out, they're with us for most of the day. I don't know if you can read Larry's writing there, but when we got to counting their ballots, we were about, what were we, eight off? Eight off from what, the 2108. So I questioned them on that because anything, if we're five or less, we don't do anything, we just move on. There was an error and we're off and that's what we, that's, we can move forward. But with this, I questioned it and they said, well, for every name that we highlighted in the poll list, there's a ballot in the ballot box. And I said, did you count the ballots before you sealed them up in the ballot box? And that was the one step they had forgotten to do. Part of it is, what happens is at the beginning of the day, we give them a printed list of everyone who has voted absentee. And those ballots immediately go up to that group of 20 people to process. Throughout the day, people have until 7:00 PM to turn in absentee ballots yet. And so we get so many more turned in throughout the day. Our process with doing that and how we process those and get those up to the absentee board is going to change. We're going to collect them throughout the day and save them until they are done with the initial list and then we will bring them up. What we were doing is as we'd get them in, we'd bring them up for them to process. And I, and in, in doing that, what I believe happened was some of the ballots that we brought up to them, didn't get accounted for. On, as, as their total, you can see on line number two, additional ballots received during the day. I think that got off. I think they got brought up there and instead of going to Larry to account for them, they were handed off and processed. So we ended up eight off. So what we did was Kristen and I opened up this poll list and this is the name of absentee voters that they highlighted, that the absentee board highlighted throughout the day. So we said, okay, well, it's going to be the total from the list, all names were highlighted, plus the names they had to physically write in from the ballots that we got throughout the day. When we did that, we were one off with the scanner. So we were confident then that that's what had happened. So removing this. These are the results from Focus. Help us Abby, help, help. So I don't know if you want to page through all of these results. But as you can see at the top, I think that's probably the most important thing. We knew we were that eight off, so 21, I think we ended up counting 2117 for absentees. And then the scanner counted 2116, so we were off with that one. And we were completely confident then that that's what had happened throughout the day. Because they had the names written down and highlighted, they just didn't have the right numbers in place. So that's the absentee. Any questions on that?
Well, I think your new procedure may save on donuts, especially with Ray Dorn.
What's that?
Your new procedure may save on the number of donuts required, especially with Ray Dorn.
Yes, I have quite the crew that helps me out on Election Day, don't we? So then, and these are going to come in no particular order. See, see how things get mucked up, you know, like the food on them? Yeah, this happens. I don't know what that is. This is, 1-6 is white, 400. They said that there were 458 ballots in the ballot box and the scanner counted 458 ballots. So they were right on. This is Bethel. She said she had 2,110 ballots in the ballot box at Bethel and the scanner counted 2110. For her to be spot on was amazing with that many. This is Sinai and they were actually off one. They had, we counted 170, the scanner counted 171. I don't know, but with just one off, we don't do anything, we just move on. 1-4 is, this is Aurora, 430, 432. Scanner counted 432. Bruce. They actually had a couple provisional ballots, so 332. 332 were counted. This is Arlington. 109, 109. Activity Center, they were actually off 12, 1353 and we had 1352. Elkton, 321. 321. This was Swiftel Center, 638, 638. No, it actually did better than Holy Life did. Holy Life was brand new. But yeah, it was, yeah, that's a, yeah, it's a nice location there, nice space. This is Volga, 770, over in Volga. 770. And this is the last one, I do believe, Holy Life. 571. 571. Do you want to compare the scanner to what we inputted into the state? I mean, we took the numbers off the scanner and actually Kristen did that on Election Night. Do you want to review the totals, how everybody did? I guess it's up to you guys.
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, okay. The other things to note. This is, this number does not include our absentees. This was actually the number that voted at Vote Center locations. 7,257 people voted in person on Election Day at one of the Vote Centers. We can track that by our old precincts. So on, this is, you know, by precinct. This is how many people voted in person on Election Day from each precinct. And then that was the total percentage that makes up that 39, 35.9. You kind of see where, to break it down a little bit further into those smaller precinct levels. We can't track it by precinct how. We can't track it by precinct how each precinct voted. You can't get a total from each of who, of how that precinct voted, but we can tell you who voted from each precinct. I have this really large report that, um, this'll tell you, this is an in- it's a very interesting report. It actually tells you, um, where, what precinct people are in, and then where they voted. So if you get into, um, like, the Bethel Baptist, this is a Bethel Baptist page, you see people from all of the different precincts, um, precinct, precincts one through six were here in town. Um, but we have down here in eight, that's Madera Township, was coming in. So we had a few of them go, go there. Um, you know, mostly it was in-town, and Brookings Township and Madera Township that came in, but not in every case. I, I know, um, Elkton had the ballots that were for the city of Brookings, Brookings, the city of Brookings and Madera Township. Um, Elkton, we gave them, I can't remember how many we gave them initially, but they ended up late in the day with just two left. Um, apparently, there was, uh, the bank had a meeting over there, and so people from here decided to just vote in Elkton because they were there, and it was convenient. And we had, I think, a couple from here that went to go visit family in Elkton and just chose to stop there and vote and take advantage of that location while they were in town. So, you know, it, it goes to show the words out that you can go anywhere, and literally, people were going everywhere to vote, so, um...
Good.
It was good. Yeah. And I think this is what information Tom was talking about earlier. This is how many people voted at each of the vote center sites. Um, Bethel Baptist, far and above the busiest place that day. Um, Activity Center, and that was the second busiest, thirteen fifty-one. Um, jumps up to, actually, Volga, then, seven sixty-nine. Um, SwifteL Center, six thirty-eight, and then Holy Life, five seventy. And you get to your other out-of-town spots. Go down from there.
I, I would hope that the, I, I'm glad to see the SwifteL Center got used, and I would hope that that trend continues because, uh, for those that have voted out there, it is, it is very convenient, easy. I mean, easy parking, easy access from all directions, and, uh, I hope it proves out to be a, be a viable place in the future. Okay.
All right, if you don't have any other questions, um...
I do, uh, the one on the, one printout had only like a thirty-five percent turnout. That didn't include the absentees with...
That include, um, overall turnout for Brookings County was about fifty-three percent. Yeah, if, when you get added in the absentees to it. Yep, um, interesting to note, though, you, you talk about that scanner, and it maybe not, it was being finicky at times. Um, there were times where we would count a fair stack of ballots, and at the end, one would jam. And if we hadn't saved, a lot of times we had to go back and count that stack again. Um, if you would have had to do that with our old scanner, we would probably still be here counting ballots. It was nothing for us to put a stack, we didn't feel like it was an issue to put a stack of ballots of, you know, several hundred back on that machine because it counted them so quickly that to put a stack back and have to recount, we all kind of did a groan because we were all wanting to go home and crawl into bed at eleven o'clock at night. But really, it was not an issue. So, I mean, and we had to do that several times, and we were still out of there at the same, I, at, we was way earlier than I think we would have been with the six fifty. So that scanner really did a great job.
Okay, good.
And once we got into the actual vote center counts, we didn't have nearly as many resolution board ballots. Um, so, you know, overall, the day went well. We had, we had seven provisionals, provisional ballots. Um, that's people who say, claim they registered. Um, they were registered, we made a mistake somewhere, and so they vote this, they vote a ballot, it gets folded up, it gets put in an envelope, and then we do some research on our end to see really, um, it just gives us an extra day or so to see if they indeed were, and that we can count it. Um, we did find one. One gal was voting provisional. We were able to locate her form before she left the poll and was, were able to have her not vote provisional ballot, which was fantastic because we would have ended up counting that one. But of the seven, we were not counting any of them. We did our research yesterday, and we even did research, honestly, when they're at the polls, we're scouring and searching at that point, too. Um, unfortunately, four of the ballots were SDSU students that voted provisional ballots. All four of them gave us a similar story, that they had registered with a group in the union on campus, um, and those registrations never came to us, never got to us. Um, it's, we had that, I think, happen four years ago, too, where a group sent a number of registration forms in late. It is a misdemeanor, actually, to hold a registration drive and not turn the registration forms in. But that is apparently what happened. Um, there were, there were four instances that day on election day, and all four had a very similar story. So we, we're gonna maybe try to look into that and see if we can figure out, you know, but they don't necessarily know what group they registered with, or exactly what day, or, or anything. So it might be a little, uh, might remain a mystery, but, um, you know, we always say it's best to, if you're gonna register to vote, just bring it right to us, or drop it in the mail yourself, because if you entrust that to someone else, um, sometimes, you know, this exact thing happens, and they don't get turned in, or maybe not turned in on time. So, um, we'll do so, a little more investigating on our end, but, you know, at this time, we're not gonna, we're not gonna count any of them. The others were just regist- you know, people who had claimed they were registered, and they told us where they thought they had, and we, we don't, they don't have record of it, so...
Okay.
So...
Guess this point a lot, from my own information, is, uh, so anybody can register anybody? It's just a misdemeanor if you, so I can come up, get a form from you, and walk down the street and...
Yes.
And peddle registrations, I guess, and, uh, just a misdemeanor if I don't turn it in. That's interesting.
Yep. Um, final results for the local commission race. Um, everyone actually was in two, less than two percent of the third-place vote getter. So there is the potential there for a recount. Any of those three could actually request a recount. Um, so from now, they'll have five business days to do that, so...
Okay.
That's it.
Other questions? If not, thank you.
Yes.
Can I just make a comment, please?
Yes, sure.
I just really want to thank both of those girls up there. They did just a great job. Stacy is known statewide for how she goes through the elections, and so we have the best teacher in the world. And Kristen, for getting thrown into this the last month or two, did just great. And all the election workers that we have that worked, um, in the office beside us, they just did tremendous. It was just a great team effort, but I can't say enough about those two right there, that they made everything go great, and, um, they just have to be thanked immensely.
Thank you.
You know, I'm glad you said that, because I think people don't realize what kind of a day that is. I mean, I, I know there's a ton of prep work prior to that, but that day, some of our election workers, including those gals, started at five-thirty AM, right? You know, that's a long, long day.
And the ones out at the different, um, precincts or vote centers, it's amazing what they do. Um, for what they get paid, it's not enough, you know? Just to be there all day and to have that kind of pressure. It's just amazing that people basically volunteer to do that. They do get paid, but it's not very much, and they really have a commitment to the county and to the voting process, and it's, it's something to really thank the people that do that.
Okay, I think the next thing on our agenda is executive session. Would someone move that would go into executive session? Moved by Wysseth, second by Falcon. The reason is legal.